Good evening. Happy to welcome all my fellow board members and call the August 14th, 2018 School Board Meeting to order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I certainly pleased you took the time to join us. We do appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us and in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the board and all of our staff members are fully committed to doing our very best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in this process. Pam, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bellford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Present.
Please join us for a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of a member of our BPS family. Mr. Scott Geisbert, a teacher at Jefferson Middle School. Thank you. Quite a teacher he was. Tonight Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Normally at this time, we do our board and superintendent recognitions, but for all of you in the audience today and looking on at home, you'll notice that we have a new face up here on the dais. And so at this time, I would first of all like to, on behalf of the board, to welcome Dr. Mark Mullins as the new superintendent. Congratulations, Dr. Mullins. And in not going in normal order, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Mullins and allow him to introduce his guests and make his remarks first. So, Dr. Mullins, take it away.
Well, thank you, Mr. Craig, and thank you, board. I just continue to pinch myself as I've had the opportunity to really enjoy a phenomenal experience and transition, not only with Dr. Blackburn, but also in our community. Have had a wonderful opportunity to get to spend time in schools and community groups and so on. The reception has just been so welcoming and it's been a great transition. But in a few minutes, we'll be introducing some new administrators. And we often hear them tout the people behind them that have helped them achieve their positions of leadership, and I am of no exception. I've had the privilege and honor of working with a tremendous number of administrators. I see in the back of the room a face that I was introduced to in my very first, back in the day, targeted selection interview. I don't know if Mr. Shifrin remembers that day, but it was in this building many years ago. And he actually was one of the first interviewers I had as an aspiring administrator. And he made me feel as comfortable as I could be in a very tense moment. So, Mr. Shifrin, it's great to continue to have you in the audience and be a part of our school system. But had wonderful mentors throughout the years. I couldn't begin to name them all like the leaders in a little bit, and surrounded by amazing colleagues in the back of the room. But there are a few extraordinarily special people in my life that when the work gets tough, and the work does get tough, because we do great work for the most important people in our community, in my opinion, our kids. And couldn't do it without an amazing support system when I wasn't working, even when my mind was still working. And they forgave me, and they loved me in spite of that, and let me go do what I needed to do to support our district. And so I'd like to recognize my wife, Laurel, and my son, Luke, and my youngest daughter, Bethany. My oldest daughter isn't here. She lives in Memphis, Tennessee. But I'm very proud to share that she is a beginning teacher in the Memphis public school system and continuing to contribute in her community and very proud of her. But thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for helping me be the leader I am today.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. And in case Dr. Blackburn is watching, I'd just make sure that you know that your ceiling tile has already been replaced in the superintendent's conference room. And the Florida State emblem is loud and proud in there. Let's see. We'll start from down there. Mr. Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I just have two quick announcements. The first one is, is that I wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Janice Schultz and the Economic Development Council for putting together what will become the largest CTE consortium that our school district's ever seen. NASA, Harris, Northrop Grumman, Rockwell Collins, Knights Armament, and many others met last week to start the alignment process of adopting schools, giving internships, educating, volunteering in the schools. Just absolutely phenomenal. NASA literally picked, brought people from Johnson Space Center to the Economic Development Council, and picked our county for the pilot project for the entire nation. So to say that this is, it's just an amazing opportunity. So I just wanted to say thank you to Janice in the back for making a lot of that stuff happen, and Ms. Sullivan for having her in there and giving her all the support you do. The other thing is, is that I wanted to send a shout out to Mr. Wheeler. Thank you so much for all the choice busing that you've been doing. I have never emailed a Arby Creach in all the years that I've been on here, which is only like 18 months, but I haven't emailed him as much as I have you in the last two days. And I want to say thank you for responding not only quickly, but with all of the changes that you've made, right on par, doing an amazing job. And I just wanted to say thank you for that. And your staff for doing all the things that they do. And if you guys get an opportunity, when you come here, if we're during the day, pop over there right by Manatee and just walk in there, because that's the hub zone center, and just say thank you for everything they're doing, because they're doing a phenomenal job over there. They're actually expanded bigger than we thought we were, more kids, more stuff, and they're just, they're handling it. So, that's it. I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Duskovich?
Just a couple. One, shout out to just everyone, teachers, staff, students. First day of school was a huge success. It was exciting to be out and in the schools. We visited two schools with Dr. Mullins that day, and a huge shout out to him and Major Walters and all of our new SROs. It was really exciting to see them on campus, to have their presence, to see them already building relationships with students. I felt more secure and safe just having them there already. So, I appreciate the board and you, Dr. Mullins, and Major Walters, wherever you are, for everything that you're doing to step up security. In addition to the SROs, there's just so much going on behind the scenes of security moving forward. And it feels, it feels good to be moving in that direction. I wanted to give Mr. Arnott back there, I saw him earlier, wherever he is, a big shout out for his Innovation Summit. It was a remarkable event. Mr. Ziegler may have a few more things to say about it. I think he was there longer than we were, but really impressive, forward-thinking, getting people motivated and inspired to work with students and where we're going with adult ed and different things of that nature. And last, a shout out to kindergarten teachers for tomorrow, because our kindergartners start tomorrow. And it's a really exciting day also for our district.
Thank you, Tina. Ms. Bellford?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I have a few. I'll try to be really quick. Echo Mrs. Duskovich's sentiments about the first day of school. I don't think that the parents or the community members really have any concept of what goes into making sure that we are ready to roll that first day, from bus drivers to custodial staff to grounds maintenance crews to, you know, obviously, all of the people supporting the administrators at the schools and the administrators and the teachers, and certainly, community members for watching their speed around school zones. And we had a phenomenal first day. So, thank you to all involved. Had the opportunity on July 31st to attend with Dr. Mullins the wrap-up of our Phase One of our security projects at Jackson Middle School, as they were wrapping the last piece of fencing and putting the golden lock on the last gate, signifying that all of our schools are now at a point of, single point of entry. All of our fencing is done. And so we now move into Phase Two. So, a huge thank you to Sue Han. I don't know if you're here, Sue. Wave if you are. She and her team have done an enormous amount of work, along with our contractors, Dane Theodore, of course, and the entire team that made all of that happen. Also incredibly exciting, on August 1st, Dr. Mullins and I had the opportunity to attend the grand opening, or grand reopening of South Lake Elementary. Phenomenal school, amazing facility, so much good going on there, and the vibe in the community has been incredibly exciting. They did a great job with the ceremony and the tour of the school. And so, thank you to all of you for supporting that. I think it has been a critical piece for our community. As importantly, I am hearing from the other schools that it has already had a positive impact on the overcrowding that they were experiencing before, and that the environments there are much calmer and more manageable, because we have taken some of those students out of the overcrowded schools. So, kudos to you all for your support in that area. I appreciate it. Of course, first day of school, had the opportunity to ride the bus with Dr. Mullins. We took a bus from the Transportation Depot, one of our regional buses, picked up students at Coquina and transported them to South Lake. And that was an exciting event. We had a new bus and a great bus driver, Jim, and had an opportunity to see how they were coordinating all of that. So, thank you, Randy, and your entire team for making all of that happen. I know it has been a logistical challenge, to say the least, but we appreciate you. On the 3rd, I had the opportunity to attend an event that I am so excited about, and if I get on a soapbox, I apologize, but my astronaut feeder train, which consists of Astronaut High School, Madison Middle School, Oak Park Elementary, Mims Elementary, South Lake Elementary, and Pinewood Elementary, all of the leaders of those schools came together over the summer and planned a back-to-school barbecue. They had it at four different locations throughout the community so that everybody could access the functions. They had hot dogs and snow cones, and they gave out books, and they had packed food bags to send home with students. And everybody had a great time. They were doing cornhole and hula hoop and all kinds of stuff. And really just a great opportunity to build relationships with students and really create a sense of community. And I think that is one of the most important factors to our success in our schools, is to build that sense of community and understand how we're all interconnected and have to support each other. So, kudos to them for doing that phenomenal event, and to all of the teachers and staff members that came out that day and made it possible as well. They also had a couple of sponsors. Titusville Police Department sponsored the event, Atani Family Pharmacy, and Parish Medical Center. So, many thanks to those sponsors for making it possible as well. Two more and then I'm done, I promise, Mr. Craig. Had the opportunity to speak with the principal from Astronaut, Krista Miller, who she and her team attended this summer the Avid training. And they are so pumped about the opportunity to bring this to their students. Krista and the entire staff that have gone through the training are, they are just over the moon excited about the opportunity that Avid brings to Astronaut High School. So, thank you again. That was one of the things that we approved in the budget last year, was to put that Avid program there. And plug for the community, they need tutors for the Avid program at Astronaut High School, 2.5 hours per week, I think. Drop me a note if you need a contact. But we want to make sure that we can support that opportunity as a community as well. And then the last one that I have is, you all, I think, got the email that Madison Middle School is doing their ribbon cutting for their fuse studio that is opening this year in Madison. And so that event, if you are able to make it, is August 23rd at 8:30. Certainly welcome you all to come up and take a look. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Mr. Ziegler drove all the way from Palm Bay to attend the opening of South Lake and celebrate with us. So, thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm good.
Thank you, Ms. Bellford. Mr. Ziegler?
Well, Ms. Bellford, I guess first shout-out should be for you. Congratulations on the opening of South Lake. That's clearly going to be one of your legacies of serving on this board. Well-deserved. You were rightfully very emotional and passionate about that. It was evident in the great speech that you gave that morning. So, congratulations. And yeah, first day of school was pretty exciting. I started out at a few schools. My first shout-out's going to be Matt to your wife, Jennifer Susan, for inviting me to Croton for a clap-in. And I gotta admit, over my years, I've never been to a clap-in before, but it was great. There were numerous community leaders there. Melvin Police Chief Gillespie was there, and Mayor Meehan, and several of her, several of the city council, Commissioner Kurt Smith, Melvin Police Department, Melvin Fire Department. And as the kids got off the bus, we were clapping and applauding and high-fiving the kids. And they were, they were like, they thought they were like on another planet or something. They were, you know, it was a cross between what in the world's going on, and they felt special. And it was just amazing to see the smiles on their faces. They got that warm welcome. What a great, what a great idea. I think that's a great way, especially in elementary school, to welcome kids back the first day of school, because I saw at some of the schools, I saw some kids very apprehensive about coming to their new school. Very emotional, worked up, and a lot of anxiety. And our staff does a great job of making sure those kids feel welcome and helpful. So, congratulations to all the schools and what a great job they did. First day as if it was a regular day at school. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Couple of quick things for myself. Couple weeks ago, I was invited to attend a community safety council group. I can't remember the exact name, but it's from the City of Rockledge. Frank Forster, one of the councilmen there, Dr. Brenda Fettrow, who's the city manager, put this together. It was the second meeting that they've had, and they will continue to do so, I believe, on a quarterly basis. It's gathering the religious leaders and pastors from Rockledge, the principals and APs, and leadership of the schools, concerned citizens coming together to try and continue to talk security, safety in our schools, in our youth, and just raising awareness of how we can collaborate better in understanding the needs of the community, understanding the needs of the students and the parents, and identifying things in advance that maybe we can put a stop to, or at least put a mitigate before they become an issue. And so, just an amazing evening of people sharing ideas. Once the conversation started, people just started throwing out ideas and having the conversations across the aisle. And it was really, really interesting to see. Rockledge Police Department was there, obviously, as they are one of the biggest proponents of our security. As many of you know, the City of Rockledge continues to place a know, the City of Rockledge continues to place an SRO in every single school. They made it a priority. They are out in full force first day of school and all the major holidays and events to make sure that they have extra people in place. And so, we really appreciate the partnership with the City of Rockledge and everything that they're doing there and I appreciate being invited to that. First day of school, everybody's mentioned it. It's amazing. I, I don't think people quite understand what it means to, to start up an organization this, this size. It, it's, it's really like opening the doors to just like multiple Walmarts at one time and having everything at the, you know, in place, stocked, ready to go, right? I mean, it's, air conditioning has to work. We know that there's issues with that. I know Ms. Skipper has sent me some emails about that. We continue to work on it. But we have an incredible team that really works hard all summer to be ready for that first day of school and I can't thank each of them enough. Transportation, always growing pains, but it is, it's, it's the, the way we respond and the flexibility and the ability to quickly react and, and change, which is critical. And we have some great people in place. Randy Wheeler is doing a great job there at Transportation. Really appreciate it. So, thank you very much for all you did. James Remmer, the new principal at Merritt Island, was, was the lucky winner of the visit from the new superintendent and, and school board chair on his first day as principal. And so, that was exciting. He was thrilled to have us, I think, Dr. Mullins, but actually it was quite calm. Things were happening. People were walking around. One of the class changes, Dr. Mullins and I got separated from the principal and then people were starting to ask, these kids are asking us, like, where's this classroom? Where's this? I have no idea. Somewhere over that way. But it was, it was refreshing to see that energy and excitement. And so, my, my congratulations to James, but to all of the new principals that have come in and I wish you the best of luck as you move forward and thank you for your, all you're doing. The last thing I'll mention is, is, you know, we have some amazing partners in the community and, and, you know, the, the, the statement that I make at the beginning of every school board meeting is, is, is really truthful. The fact that we cannot do this alone. We, we know that we have to be with the community. The community has to support us. We rely on the community and our community stakeholders, business partners in so many ways. One of the, at least in my district, one of the largest supporters continues to be the Giorgiana United Methodist Church. And just to share with you what they've done just in the last couple of days, they bought two, two uniform shirts for every student at Cambridge Elementary. Just out of their pocket, here's two shirts for every student. Cambridge is one of our schools that, that has mandatory uniforms. They bought the, the entire ice station program for Tropical Elementary again, second year. They provided staff lunches for all of Merritt Island High School, Jefferson, and I think every school on the island. So, it's things like that, that, that some of the intangibles, some of them are tangible, some are intangible, that we as a board and we as a district just truly appreciate. And I only use them as an example because I, I know what they did, but I know that there are so many organizations and groups that contributed to a successful opening of our school district and I can't thank you enough for all you do. It, we can't do it on our own. And you all make a difference and the impact is, is truly appreciated. Dr. Mullins, do you have anything else?
Yes, please. And some of it is going to sound like an echo, but so much, so much goes on in this community to prepare our kids to return to school. I had the privilege of attending backpack giveaways down at Center Point Church down in Palm Bay, then at Clear Lake Education Center, sponsored by the Brevard Schools Foundation. I know so many other of our churches across our community take up that call as well and provide resources to our kids so that every child has the opportunity to start school with everything they need, with the biggest smiles on their faces. And that's exactly what we saw in the schools that we visited around on the first day. I've got to do a shout-out to our leading and learning team on, yes, on August 6th. Talk about getting ready for 65, 70,000 students. We had 5,000 teachers come together across our district. All secondary teachers came together next door at Viera High School for Professional Development Day. I gotta tell you, the logistics had to have been over the top, but the synergy in that building throughout the day was phenomenal. Secondary teachers of like disciplines coming together, collaborating, going to breakout sessions together, gleaning new tools to take back into their classrooms, the dialogue. It was like a big, giant family reunion at Viera High School. And then I had the opportunity to go visit. We had several elementary sites across the district by grade level. Kindergarten and first grade teachers working together collaboratively, second, third, fourth, fifth, and then sixth. So, they were grouped together, doing that articulation across grade levels, being introduced to new resources, tools. The synergy again in, in those environments was absolutely amazing. Teachers across our district coming together and committing to our vision for excellent instruction. It was, it was a great, it was a great preview of what's to come this school year. August 7th evening, we got to celebrate several exemplary science teachers up at the Florida Solar Energy Center. Just again, our community and business partners and sponsors celebrating exemplary teachers. And just a really exciting evening to, to honor our teachers. But so much to echo what has already been said, happens behind the scenes. Just to put in, on the first day of school, we served 33,700 meals. I think we rival McDonald's. And they were nutritious and they were healthy and they were well-prepared and certainly prepared with love for our kids across our district. So, thirty, and that will grow as school continues to, we serve over 60,000 meals every day to our students between breakfast and lunch. My, just a huge shout-out to our food services team that not only feeds our kid, but their kids, but they're rolling out new, healthy, newer, healthy choices to our kids this year, from salads to breakfast sandwiches and-
Real chicken.
Antibiotic-free whole muscle white chicken and, and wings on Wednesday.
Did we have half muscle?
I also have to do a shout-out to our district security team, Major Walters and his team, the gentleman you see around the room, and the SROs and the off-duty officers we had in our schools that will continue until we have our, our school security specials in place. Thank you for your commitment to make that happen and the coordination. Imagine across 10 law enforcement agencies, quite an effort. Our facilities team, all of the projects that you approved months and months ago had to get done in about a 10-week window. From new roofs to new entire air conditioning systems, we renovated several cafeterias. All of that had to be done, ready to go, open up to, to welcome our thousands and thousands of kids on August 10th and it happened. That isn't by chance. That's with great leadership and commitment. Transportation, three, over 350 buses fire up at the same time, on the same morning, go to 350 different locations to pick up almost 25,000 children and bring them into our schools. That takes tremendous effort, coordination. And all of our other departments behind the scenes, working up here to make sure our schools had the, everything they need from toilet paper to pencils to construction paper, that all comes together. So, just an amazing team from community to BP, Team BPS. So, just tremendously proud to be a part of this school system.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I, I'm going to use some chairman prerogative. I forgot to mention one thing and because we have some of the audience here and before we lose people later, usually I would include it in my board discussion or board report, but many of you know the Take Stock in Children program. Amazing program, offers mentorship and onward to a scholarship as they go on to post-secondary education, run by the Brevard Schools Foundation. They do an amazing job. We are still in need of mentors. We have a, a, expanding program and we need about 30 more mentors. So, if you're watching and you don't know what a mentor is, I ask you to look on our website on the, under Brevard Schools Foundation and look up, look that up, Take Stock in Children. If you know what it is and you've been wondering if you should dive in, it's an amazing experience and I challenge you to please, please do that. We really could use your help. And it is, I think, a, a, something you'll enjoy quite a bit. So, thank you. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Mr. Craig and members of the board, on today's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 12 consent items, two action items, and five information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations has been revised. Item D8 was added as a presentation to receive a scholarship check from OneBlood. Consent items F15, Board Policy 5223, absences for religious instruction, and item F16, Board Policy 5225, absences for religious holidays were revised. Consent item F19 on educational facilities, impact fees was added. Consent item F20 on Bureau of General Services, Office of Emergency Management, 2017-18 Annual Assessment Report was revised. Three board discussion items were also added. State guidelines for PFOS, PFOA, legacy charter 90-day termination status, and athletic advisory group.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Craig. There are five persons on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
At this time, I would like to welcome and recognize those administrative staff persons here with us this evening. Please join me in congratulating Maurice Fluellen on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Lockmar Elementary to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Palm Bay Magnet High School.
Thank you very much for having me and giving this position. And I also want to thank Mr. Kamanski, my principal. This is a wonderful opportunity and I, I'm glad that you've had faith in me to do this and invite me on your glorious team of people. They've embraced me already. I already feel part of the family. I also want to thank Ms. Baumann, Dr. Sullivan, Krista Miller, and Courtney Mayner for all the learning opportunities I've been provided here at the district. They have been really great and, and very informative and I believe it's given me great opportunities of growth. But of course, I can't also forget about, have, and get an organization that promotes for Haitian students and people in the community to advance and be part of the culture and environment here. But nothing of this could be done without my parents, who are here to support me as well, my children, and even my sister. And with all of their help, I get to be the person I am today and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Next, we want to recognize Tanza Keneely on her reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Viera High School to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at Johnson Middle School.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Mullins. Thank you so much for this opportunity. First, I want to share my, my deepest appreciation to my family and friends. I have Colin and I'm not repeating myself, another Colin, Taylor, and Heidi here with me this evening. My son Zachary's working, so he couldn't be here. There are so many faces in the back of the room that have been part of my growth here at Brevard and thank all of you for that. Mr. Alba, your leadership is admirable. The opportunities that you provide, your teacher leaders and your faculty, your administration, thank you for all the growth opportunities I've had there. It's been honestly, I think, a short time, but so much growth has taken place and thank you so much for that. Mrs. Robinson, you're inspirational. All your support has been wonderful. You're a wealth of knowledge and I really appreciate everything that you've helped me with. So, thank you for that. I also want to mention having, coming from Viera, going to Johnson, I, I would be remiss in not mentioning my experience at O'Gally High School under the leadership of Mr. Solomon. And I think with the experience from O'Gally and from Viera is really going to help serve the students at Johnson Middle School as those are the two feeder schools. So, I really feel like when they say there's a perfect fit, I think this is it. Mrs. Middleton, I'm looking forward to working with you. I've, I've heard great things. I, I appreciate your, your vision and your mission for the students and you have my commitment to serve the community of Johnson Middle School and I'm really looking forward to it. So, thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, congratulations to Dr. Beth Thetty on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services to the position of Deputy Superintendent, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Craig, Dr. Mullins, board members, everybody in attendance. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to serve this district that I love so much in a different capacity. It's exciting. It's exhilarating, a little bit scary, but I have got a great team with me that I am leaving behind in Student Services and I appreciate you guys coming tonight. And I've got my new team with me also in operations and I'm thrilled to have you here tonight as well. Can't wait to start working with you. But as everybody has said, there's no way I could do this job without the support of my friends and my family. And I have with me my husband Lou and my son Brian and it's their support that has allowed this to happen. My daughter Natalie's back at college, so she was not able to join us. And my mom flew to, to Baltimore this morning to visit her sister, so she wasn't able to be here either. But I also want to thank my colleagues in the back of the room too, because it's their faith in me and in, in my ability that will keep this going because I'm going to need them more than I've needed them before. So, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Craig, if I may take just a quick moment and thank the families that are here this evening with your loved one who has committed to the next level of leadership. We appreciate what they do. We need their leadership, but we know that you make sacrifices at home too and thank you for allowing them to do what they need to do to take care of our kids. And I already saw Lou before the meeting started and I apologized before because I know that I've taken his, his wife on, in a new journey. So, Lou, I thank you personally.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. All right, with us tonight is Beth Ann Jewell, I hope I can pronounce that right, Community Relations Coordinator for OneBlood, who is here to present a scholarship check to our high schools. Ann?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Beth Ann. I'm responsible for getting the big red buses out in Brevard County. We have four in the county and in the state, we actually have 200 buses. We basically collect 95% of the blood for our hospitals in the state of Florida. Our buses are out seven days a week, non-stop, all the time. That being said, summer is our toughest, toughest time. We're down to a two-day supply of O-negative, which is the most needed blood supply. So, no one is more happier than OneBlood that school started right now. Because we know we're on our way to all of our high schools where the superhero kids just get on those buses and donate and have a lot of fun, spend way too much time with us. They eat lots of pizza and have lots of junk food. We realize that it is a big, I'm, I'm going to say sacrifice, but it's not the word I want, but it, it, it is tough on our administrators and faculty and certainly our school nurses when we're on campus for the day. It requires a lot of patience and I, the schools are wonderful. There's just nothing I can say about the support that they give us. We really, we, we need those kids and they are literally just superheroes. Every single one that gets on the bus- one that gets on the buses. So that being said, what OneBlood does for our schools is, for every donor, we give back ten dollars in scholarship money for every single donor. From January to June, we had fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-four donors in all of our high schools. That, for us at OneBlood, equates to almost forty-five-hundred lives saved. It's beyond words, and I tell people, you know, you put it in comparison, when people don't understand how much that one pint of blood means. When the Pulse shooting happened, five of our spokespersons from Pulse, who now support us every year and go to functions and meet the kids, it took sixty donors to save just the five lives that are our spokespeople for OneBlood. Sixty donors to save just those lives. And what people don't realize is, when something would happen that's that traumatic and there's an immediate need, all of the blood that actually saved those lives were donated two or three days before the tragedy. So even though we watched the news and we had everyone line up and we were able to replenish the supply, for those patients, the supply was there. And we can't continue to do that unless we have all of the support of our schools and of all of our community, whether we're at a Walmart, or today we're at Northrop Grumman. I mean, we're just so grateful. So that being said, you know, our schools were amazing, and we were able to bring a check over for fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars for scholarships to go to all the high school kids that deserve them, because a lot of the kids, I know. It's unbelievable, and I know that a lot of the kids that help with the blood drives benefit from these scholarships, so, you know, as much as they're willing to have us, we're willing to be there, and always just, there are no words, just grateful, so. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Mr. Reed?
Dr. Mullins, I think we'll get a picture there. Front and center.
I do want to say, too, a lot of our elementary school post-drives for us, which the faculty participate in, actually, one of them, we love them.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much for your partnership and for being here tonight. All right. We are now at public comments, and those School Board Policy zero-one-six-nine dot one limits to thirty minutes the portion of the meeting during which the public's invited to participate and provide public comment. The policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We do have twenty-five speakers signed up this evening, but before I get into whether we want to do that or not, a majority of those are about a discussion item that are at the end of our, after our action, excuse me, after our consent and our action items. If the board so indulges me, I believe the best course of action is to take the seven speakers that have signed up for items that are actually on our agenda that are not on the discussion panel, and then we can have the legacy charter discussions right before, in our secondary public discussion, right before we actually get into our board discussion. Is that good, Ms. Endall? I think, I see a thumbs up from everybody. So we will go with that, and I will call you up, so the first seven speakers, and let me get through my little mandatory thing here. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We do have this fancy-dancy clock here in front of me to help you keep track of your time. It'll count down from three minutes. When your time is over, you'd be asked to stop and allow the next speaker their turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statements should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request that individual leave the meeting. We do encourage an environment appropriate for our children, who may be present or who are watching from home. We'll begin with the first three speakers, Judith Weaver, Ronald Bradley, and Anthony Calucci. Judith?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Judith Weaver, and I have worked in animal rescue, education, and caring for animals, and speaking up for animals for over thirty-five years in the U.S. and in other countries abroad. I am a member of the National Anti-Vivisection Society and the Physicians for Animal Responsibility, as well as PETA. I'm here today on behalf of PETA's six-point-five-million members and supporters regarding the dissection of live animals in education and the dissection supply industry. These suppliers continue the hideous practice of collecting and distributing animals because schools continue to purchase live animals for dissection, even though modern and humane alternatives exist and are increasingly being adopted across the country. There is no educational value in having students cut into animals, but the many benefits of humane, non-animal instruction, such as digital dissection and associated computer programs, are well documented. Using modern methods such as computer programs, the students learn faster and are able to repeat material until they're proficient. Studies also show that students prefer using humane alternatives such as interactive simulations and anatomical models. Dissecting animals has been shown to dissuade some students from entering science-related fields, and some students are uncomfortable speaking up against using live animals because of fear of potential ostracism from peers. A growing majority of young people are opposed to animal experimentation and dissection. When I was in high school, let's see, that was about a hundred or so years ago, my science class dissected a frog, and two students fainted. Of course, we didn't have computers and appropriate programs then. Now we do, and we must take advantage of them as much as possible, particularly in the areas of science, while at the same time emphasizing kindness to animals. The act of cutting open an animal, a misguided classroom activity, teaches children that living beings are disposable and downplays the fact that they once were alive. This is a very dangerous lesson, especially with the increase in incidence of cruelty to animals perpetrated by juveniles and an epidemic of school bullying, which often leads to cruelty to humans. U.S. medical schools, Harvard, Yale, Brown, Princeton, have ended animal dissection activities, so clearly there is no reason for middle or high school students to dissect animals. Because the Brevard Public School Board of Education is tasked with adopting procedures and policies for the operation of the school industry, it is within your purview to make policies that guide and protect students, teachers, and administrators.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Your time is up. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Ronald Bradley, Anthony Calucci, and Vanessa Skipper.
Good evening, Dr. Mullins, and you board members. I kind of had to laugh because I'm older than, I was born, I mean, I got a daughter older than all of you probably up there, so show respect to me. Thank you. My question is, I'm kind of concerned, because we went all summer long, and then we started school, and some of the schools didn't have air conditioning in them. I worked for the largest mechanical contractors in Orlando. We did work for all different companies. AT&amp;T was one. We'd have fifteen-hundred people in one office building, and we never had a building over one day that was out of air conditioning, or we wouldn't be doing that company. A lot of people don't understand, and I don't understand why. I'm not picking on the school board members, but some of the air conditioning guys don't get paid as much as the school board members. You've got to understand, when a guy works on air-conditioned equipment for a school system, there's thousands and thousands of dollars of equipment. It's a big responsibility. You have to know a lot. I started in nineteen-sixty-two, working on air conditioning. It's really kind of ironic. We worked for the city of St. Petersburg, and we'd get a call, you've got to go down to City Hall. If you don't get down there, the mayor's going to get mad at you. Work for the school system, you're clear down in the other part of the country. Oh, the school board's down. Get up here and get it done. The way that you can get everybody's lights turned on is turn the air conditioner off in this building, because you say, well, I've got a school to take care of, let's turn the, I don't have time to come up here and work on this district office. There's, I've got twelve items down here that you have to know to even start out. I served three and a half years in the sheet-mill trade, and I served five years in the air-conditioning trade. I started out in nineteen-fifty-eight, and I think that I've got enough background to really know what I'm talking about. So you have to pay people, and don't tell me that you can't find the money. There's money to be found, and I could tell you where it could be found, but I don't have time tonight, because my time's going out. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you, sir. Anthony Calucci, Vanessa Skipper, Xavier Hendricks.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm humbled and honored to represent the five thousand effective teachers of Brevard County. As BFT president, I'm here to tell you that after two years of this board pushing around our teachers, we're pushing back. You feigned interest in our issues, but when we've presented them to you, shoulders shrugged, hands have been thrown up, you run from them. And now, in perhaps your most egregious act, you've hoodwinked our teachers. You went out and hired a compensation director and staff under the guise of improving teacher and staff salaries for a cost of a quarter million dollars a year. In reality, this department was hired to take away employee compensation. Your compensation department has been tasked by you to take away advanced degree pay, take away supplements, and reclassify employees so they are paid less. You created this department to outsource a compensation study for nearly a hundred thousand dollars. A year later, I say, show me the study and show me the money. We are fully prepared to deal with the pettiness of this board through grievances, lawsuits, and arbitrations, if that's what you want. But once again, I'm here to say, own it, own your plan, let the taxpayers know, let them know that you spend about a half a million dollars a year on a labor relations staff and over a quarter million dollars a year in an in-house legal department, yet you still outsource your arbitrations. One arbitration last year, you spent twenty-five thousand dollars to an outside firm. You lost this clear-cut case, and then you allowed the principal to loophole around the decision. By the way, our former president argued that case without spending a nickel on legal counsel. Time and time again, you've shown teachers they are not your priority. Why can you find a way to open South Lake and bring back busing, yet it raises the last two years, or actually a decrease in real dollars? You figured out how to put armed personnel in every school, but you can't figure out why students are without a teacher for forty-five days because of false charges being filed against them with DCF. And you created a way to have armored cars pick up field trip money at every school, but you can't figure out how to make the air conditioning work. It's time for this board to stop with the photo ops and start working for teachers and staff so they can concentrate on working with students.
Vanessa Skipper, Xavier Hendricks, Marie Montemerno.
Good evening, Vanessa Skipper, Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I'd like to take a moment to also recognize Scott Geisbert. Scott Geisbert was my brother's science teacher and also my oldest son, and I'm very disappointed that my youngest will not have the opportunity to have him. When I was taking my Intro to College Education class at BCC, my brother Gabriel told me I had to do my observation there. When he passed, this is what Gabe had to say. "There have been very few people who have left a mark on my life, and especially teachers. I hated school. This man made me fall in love with science and gave me a perspective that drove me to learn. I can say with certainty that he has left his mark on many of us. Godspeed, sir." Scott Geisbert was not only an educator, but he was an influencer on lives, and we are going to miss him as a teacher and also as a member of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I also had the chance to start my school day at Crotton Elementary at the invitation of Jen Susan, and it was an incredible moment to be there with community members welcoming kids to school. And as I headed back to the office, I did start to tear up as I thought about the students I was not greeting in my classroom. But I didn't have time to cry, because the calls started coming in about air conditioning. I started talking in front of this school board, obviously with different faces, back in 2013. And guess what one of my issues were, was? Air conditioning. I go into Walgreens, guess what they have all the time? Air conditioning. I walk into this building, guess what they have all the time? Air conditioning. Hospitals, wherever you go, why can't we get it right? Why do we continue to insist that what we're doing is working? It's not. We're replacing chillers. We're using that half-penny tax, which, by the way, I didn't see any school board member on the corner waving signs for that. I didn't see school board members dressing up and going to Boo at the Zoo every single weekend, handing out literature. Teachers, community members, helped pass that. Yet we refuse to go out for millage. Yet we refuse to recognize that there's no excuse for schools who started the school year without air conditioning. There's none. There's not one. I still cannot understand why we shut the air down on the weekends, why we shut it down over the summer. When I leave my house, do I bump it up to seventy-eight or seventy-nine? Sure, during these hot summer months, when it's working harder. We must do something different. Our students deserve better, and our teachers and our other school employees deserve better. Thank you.
Xavier Hendricks, Marie Montemerno, and Adrian Schmattiki.
Hello, everyone on the board. How are you doing today? My name is Xavier Hendricks, and I'm a 2017 graduate from Basin High School, and I am now entering my sophomore year at Southeast University in Lakeland, Florida. I'm here today to share with you my story, and thank you for your continued support with the organization Who We Play For. My dream once was to be a college football star and obtain my undergrad in pre-medicine at Southeast University. I was never really sure what field of medicine I wanted to go into about a year, until about a year and a half ago. I'd like to share with you now my testimony. I have been a multi-sport athlete as far as I can remember. I started playing football at the age of six and obtained a true love for the game, as well as sports all around. I received a calling from God telling me that my opportunity to further my education would be at Southeast University, and I could not be happier with that decision and the people that the Lord has placed in my life. It was my dream to play college football, however, it was not the path that God had set out for me. He sent Who We Play For to my school and requested that they screen all of the athletes in the school. My results showed that I had an abnormality through the ECG screening that they conducted. Through this experience, I found out I had a very rare heart syndrome called Wolff-Parkinson's White, WPW for short. It is derived from an electro-electrical pathway that can have the potential of causing my heart to have a rapid heartbeat, or expose me to tachycardia and go into sudden cardiac All my life, I haven't displayed any of the known symptoms of this syndrome, which makes it a constant nightmare to live my daily active life. it a constant nightmare to live my daily active life without knowing I could just collapse and die, God forbid. I have had two unsuccessful surgeries to try and remove the pathway, but my hopes are never diminished. My ma... my major in college is pre-med, and I'm pursuing a career in cardiovascular medicine. A reoccurring event that our world faces today are cases where student athletes are falling over and dying while participating in practices, and no one seems to know the reason behind it. Having the knowledge I do about ECG screening and Who We Play For can better equip me to spread awareness about these horrible cases we have been facing for years. All of the high-competitive sports have been taken away from me. However, without my undying faith in God calling me to Southeastern and leading the Who We Play For organization into my life, I do not know if I would be standing in front of you today. I am forever in their debt. Because of this experience and my passion for altering the lives of others, it is my life's mission to help spread awareness and change the lives of others alongside with the people that have changed mine. In conclusion, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to share with you my story. I stand before you as a survivor. Because of this organization that I stand by so passionately, I want to change the world, and with your help, we can implement these screenings across Brevard County and create a domino effect throughout our state and our nation to provide a service that is so simple, but has an impact far greater than any obstacle. Thank you.
Marie Montamerno and Adrian Schmaddicki.
Um, I'm here because I want to talk about an incident that occurred on the first day of school. My biggest concern since learning that we were going to have school resource officers in all of the schools, the first thing that I thought of is, "What about the autistic kids? What's gonna happen when they act up?" And I found out on the first day of school when I saw a blog that my good friend wrote on her son's, uh, first day of middle school. Twelve years old, a very sweet boy, but he is autistic. He does have anxiety in crowds. He thrives on routine and consistency and clear expectations and quiet. They developed an IEP. They communicated with the, um, the teachers and the guidance counselors. They prepared their son. They did a dry run and walked through the entire campus when the campus was empty. It was his first day riding the school bus, and he made it through the first three periods of school, but when he got to lunch, it was loud and chaotic. He had a difficult time. He couldn't eat or drink, and he was stressed out. So, by the end of the day, he'd really had enough, and he started scratching his arm, which is a behavior that sometimes autistic children will do. So, he was removed from the classroom because this was considered inappropriate behavior. And at this point, he'd said, he'd made a comment, "I just wanna kill myself so I don't have to go to school." He said it the same way that a teenager might say, "Oh, my God, I'd just die if that happened." So, he doesn't have pragmatic language skills, and this is noted in his file. He doesn't have access to weapons. He's supervised in their home. He's not suicidal. However, the new school resource officer overheard and decided to Baker Act their child without context, without questioning his stress levels or mental abilities. The guidance counselor chose not to get involved. He did not implement the functional behavior plan on file. He did not contact the parents. He disregarded everything outlined in the IEP. As mom was pulling up to the school, she saw her confused child stepping into the back of a police car. She followed them for forty-five minutes until they got to an inpatient psychiatric center. She learned that their own doctor could not release him from the Baker Act. She could not take him home. She begged to stay with her son, her autistic son, on his first day of school. She could not spend the night with him. Instead, she was asked for her insurance card because she would have to pay for unwanted, unneeded, unauthorized inpatient overnight care and evaluation, which they now have to pay thousands of dollars for. They don't know where they're gonna go now, where their child can safely learn. A few months back, school counselors sat in this room, and they pled for more resources. I'm wondering if that's been addressed at all.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Schmaddicki.
Sorry. Schmaddicki?
It gets butchered everywhere.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I was doing it right.
All right. Hi. Good evening. I'm here, um, on behalf of being a Quest parent. You guys know, I'm sure, our issue over there with the numbers, um, the enrollment is exploded. It's... we are, um, we've seen it. I... we moved here in two thousand and thirteen. My kids were enrolled there the first year, and, um, there's about seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and sixty kids. Now, um, I've been over at eleven hundred, reaching eleven hundred, and it's very obvious. First of all, um, there are seven to eight classrooms per grade. You guys know about the portables? I'm not a big fan of them, but I'm now not a big fan of other things going on. STEAM. We now have something called STEAM, not STEM, STEAM. It's now art mixed in with STEM. They've got the art teacher and the STEM teacher in the same classroom with different classes in there, sharing a classroom to try to adapt to the numbers. So, instead of these teachers having their own classroom, they're sharing a classroom. My kids came home with their sketchbooks for art today because they don't need them, because they're not gonna need them for art, because they don't have traditional art anymore. The lunches are beginning, um, around ten AM, ending around one PM, if they... on... if they're on time. That means on early release day, the kids eat lunch, go home immediately. Sixth grade's eating lunch at ten-thirty in the morning. Kindergarteners eating lunch at ten AM. There's absolutely no space in our cafeteria. Kids are complaining how crowded it is. They have hardly any space to sit down at the tables. Um, traffic. I lived in Strom Park. I was literally one of the first three houses to close in Addison Village. Strom Park was the first community of Addison Village. The traffic over there is a nightmare at, um, school, when school's getting out. Trafford Drive, you absolutely cannot pass it. If you come down Stadium, don't go down Trafford, because it's one lane each way. You won't... you'll get stuck there. Um, Lake Andrew Drive, thank goodness, it is passable on the left-hand side. If you go into the illegal left-hand turn lane and keep going straight, you can get past all the school traffic. Um, inclement weather. Our very first day, we had an inclement weather pickup, and it was over forty-five minutes long of kids sitting, waiting for the kids... the parents to pick them up in the carpool lane. Um, I went through, and at three-ten, and picked up my kids, and there's still cars backed up, up, like, Lake Andrew Drive and back down Trafford to get their kids at three-ten in the afternoon. Recession. I implore that we get more playground equipment. Um, the kids are going out. They... we don't have enough playground equipment for the kids. We also have recess now that's indoor... indoor recess, even on nice days, because there's not enough, um, room out there. There is fire ants on the playground that need to be treated, and in the field especially, that need to be treated, please, on a routine basis. Um, and then now the music program has changed. It used to start in third grade for chorus. It's now bumped up. Band now only starts in sixth grade where it used to be fifth grade. So, I implore you, please, get moving with the... building us a new school, an additional school in Viera. We really, really need it. Thank you.
That just pauses our public comment for now. Uh, thanks to each of you for your, uh, comments and for taking the time to address the board. Dr. Mullins, that moves us into the consent agenda.
There are twelve agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items, uh, as published.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Deskovich, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? I do not have any, uh, access, so, uh, we will go by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, hearing none, motion passes five-zero. Is there any need for a break at this time? No? Thank you. We will continue on. We'll move to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Mr. Craig, there are two items under this category. The first item is G twenty-two on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by, uh, Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes five-zero. Next item is G twenty... uh, sorry, Dr. Mullins.
The next item is G twenty-three on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote. Uh, all in favor, uh, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes five-zero. Now move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and we brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight, Dr. Mullins.
There are five items under the information category, all concerning policy revisions.
Does any member wish to discuss an item? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to, um... I don't have my agenda in front of me, because I've lost everything, but I believe... we'll move back into public, um, comment. Same rules apply as, uh, previously, uh, mentioned. Um, please adhere to the three-minute timeline or time limit. We have eighteen more speakers to, uh, address an item that is on our board discussion. Uh, just so that everybody realizes, there is no action that is required to be taken during board discussion. It is merely here to, uh, have the board, uh, be able to have some sort of public discussion regarding, uh, whatever is listed there, and different board members can add things as they see fit. So, uh, that being said, uh, and those expectations being noted, we'll start with, um, the first three. We have, uh, Dr. Vernon Clay, Dwight Siegler, and Darren Etienne.
Good afternoon, uh, Dr. Mullins. Thank you, Mr. Craig. I'm here for Legacy to talk about the wonderful things that are going on there, and also to ask for our board's support. The only reason why Legacy Academy Charter is here at eighteen-twenty-three Knox-McCray Street is because of three people. Mrs. Charlene Munford, Ms. Deborah Davis, Mr. Napoleon Carroll, who founded the school, has been chartered. They set up the plan. And so, going into the first day and listening at your reports, and if you hear from her today, I'm sure that she will have a rivalry of the same type. Our first day went wonderful. However, there is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, Dr. Mullins, in Tallahassee. It is there on the books because we have, from this board, this district, we have withheld as if it is an embargo. Now, I went to the school, and they told me that the money is being there, being withheld because of perhaps a curriculum need, or maybe some other minor administrative purpose. So, the money could be used for a new playground. We have about five acres. I want to invite you to come up and see it, if you haven't already, and the board, and give our district representative on this board the approval to support this school that will go for new textbooks, new projectors overhead, new desks. In the principal's office, she had to purchase her own. How many of you would be principal of a school where you had to purchase your own desk and so forth? Mrs. Munford, who is the president of the board, she was showing us. We took a tour of the school, and her office was empty. She has to purchase it. We are not in the fifties. In the fifties and forties, prior to segregation, the white schools got the new equipment, and the black schools got the secondhand. And that's what happened. They don't even have kitchen equipment. There is a lending support from this body to feed children in the school. They were forced to get a certificate of occupancy, and it caused some payroll glitches and so forth. But these qualifications in the school have been met by the state, which is higher than any county. And so, therefore, I will not come back to ask the board to release the funds. I will come back to thank you for doing so at Legacy Charter School in Titusville.
Darren Etienne and Charlene Munford.
Dwight Siegler. I'm the president of the East Mem Civic League, and, um, I've heard a lot of great things about Legacy Charter School over the past year. And, um, I think that they should be given the opportunity to proceed in what... and the great work that I've heard they've been doing. Um, Ms. Belford, I heard you, um, were announced tonight as being, uh, part of your legacy would be the opening of South Lake. I'd also like to hear that part of your legacy would be the continuing of the operation of Legacy Academy. Ask you to do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Darren Etienne, uh, Charlene Munford, and Charlotte Chase.
Good evening. Um, I am Darren Etienne, and I'm representing the Legacy PTO Board. Uh, Mrs. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Uh, this evening, a board member spoke on the overcrowding in the north area of the county. Uh, having two STEAM schools should only be seen as a benefit to the mission of BPS. As I dropped my kids off on Monday, I was overwhelmed by the amount of students that were still showing up to join the Lyon family. Even under the threat of termination, it still shows that parents want more for their children. The reason we decided to take our kids to Legacy after one year at their home school was the bullying and lack of care by the administration. With the smaller classrooms at Legacy, my children have thrived and look forward to the learning each and every day. Almost every teacher knows my kids as well as myself. I joined the PTO because I have faith in Legacy and what this administration and staff are doing to guide our young people. Please consider Legacy a part of your county and give us a chance to serve every student with excellence as the standard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charlene Munford, Charlotte Chase, Tiffany Ward.
Good afternoon, school board members and Superintendent Mullins. My name is Charlene Munford. I am the, um, board chair of Legacy Academy Charter School. I live at four-thirty Dumbin Avenue in Titusville, Florida. Our new school facility, located at nineteen-twenty-three Knox-McCray Drive, opened for the first day of school on August tenth, with two hundred and twenty-five returning and new students. New families are enrolled in every day at Legacy Academy. Needless to say, our parents, students, teachers, and staff were very excited to begin the new school year in our state-of-the-art facility. Please come out and visit. In two thousand and sixteen, Legacy was blessed to enter into an agreement with American Charter Development and to purchase the Royal Oaks Shopping Center in Titusville. A local construction firm, Rush Construction, won the bid for the renovation of the old Publix Grocery Store in the Plaza, and the work began to convert this old grocery store into the beautiful facility that it is today. Our new facility provides a much-needed economic boost and improvement to an area of our Titusville community that was in a state of decline. Over the past several months, we have added two new board members, and on August twenty-seventh, the board will undergo governance board training provided by the Arnold Law Firm. Our newest board member, Wendy Noder, is a twenty-one-year resident of Palm Bay. She has been a school leader since two thousand and ten and has successfully led a public charter school in Brevard County. Her years of leading a charter school will be an asset to the governing board. We are... We are also currently seeking an attorney to serve on our board. We presently have two attorneys who are interested in serving on the Legacy Board. We expect to make a decision on a new board member at our August twenty-seventh board meeting. The Legacy governing board is committed to complying with Florida Sunshine laws, Public Records Act, and all of the school compliance regulations of the DOE, Department of Education, the State of Florida, and the Brevard County School District. We are respectfully requesting, on behalf of our board and the entire north Brevard community, that you end the ninety-day termination recommendation closure for Legacy Academy. I believe that we have shown the commitment and will continue to show the dedication needed to serve our community well. Thank you.
Tiffany Ward, or, I'm sorry, Charlotte Chase, Tiffany Ward, Cindy Gilmore.
Dr. Mullins and school board members, good evening. My name is Charlotte Chase, and I'm the current Director of Student Services with Green Apple School Management. I am also the treasurer of the Florida branch of the International Dyslexia Association. Over the last several weeks, I've had the opportunity, along with our curriculum director, to work with the staff at Legacy Academy Charter School, a group of professionals who are highly passionate and dedicated not only to their school and students, but to ensuring that this school year begins smoothly and has followed every recommendation made by Green Apple. During the time I've spent with them, I've assisted them with addressing issues cited in the April report issued by the School Choice Office, as well as providing professional development, including lesson planning, accommodations for students with exceptionalities, and universal design for learning. Legacy earned a grade of C last year in spite of the School Choice Office's best attempts to disrupt the entire learning community. I asked the board, does the Office of Equity, Choice, and Innovation spend the same amount of time at a school like Cambridge Magnet School, also a C, or Endeavor, Engulf You, a D? Furthermore, it seems to me that the Office of Equity, Innovation, and Choice should be supporting charter schools rather than working to undermine them. Consider the extensive amount of time, energy, and taxpayer dollars the School Office of Equity, Choice, and Innovation has committed to the attempts to close Legacy Academy Charter School rather than supporting a school that has performed as well as the schools surrounding them. Secondly, I've had the pleasure of working with Ms. Tiffany Ward when she became the principal at Oasis Preparatory Academy, a high-poverty, high-minority school in the Pine Hills area of Orlando. Ms. Ward came into Oasis at the end of November with state assessments coming in April. The school was already struggling, and she worked effortlessly and tirelessly to do whatever it needed to turn that campus around. Oasis was not successful at the end of the year, but Ms. Ward had made many improvements during her short time as principal. In addition, Ms. Ward is highly lauded by Kia Scott Sweeney, the senior director of charter schools at Orange County Public Schools, citing Ms. Ward for her dedication to the charter schools over seven years, including leading schools to set a fifteen-year renewal, and her high commitment to making sure that all compliance is followed. Over her many years of experience, Ms. Ward has an excellent record of improving school grades. As the principal at Legacy, she's empowering her staff to be successful and demonstrate solid leadership in the building. In closing, I encourage Brevard School members, board members, to consider the actions of those of us who've stepped forward to support Legacy as it continues to be a successful school in the county. Thank you.
Tiffany Ward, Cindy Gilmore, Constance Ortiz.
Good evening, Brevard County School Board members and Superintendent Dr. Mullins. My name is Tiffany Ward. I'm the principal at Legacy Academy Charter School. I'd like to begin by saying that I'm honored to be the principal for Legacy Academy Charter School. Although I've only been at the school for about four weeks, I'm happy that I chose to accept the position. Despite working through this ninety-day termination notice, I have taken on the attitude that I'm doing it all for the community and the young scholars that are in my care. The community has been extremely welcoming to us. We have not had an opportunity to do much in the way of advertising, and we're still waiting on our signage to be put on the building. Even though our school may be one that's hard to find, we are approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five students and counting. We're getting new students that are enrolling every day. In addition, I'm thankful for the staff that I have that have remained at the school and the new ones that took a chance and came on with me this year. One of my staff members even decided to take a leap of faith and leave my prior school to help me with my newest adventure. I believe in what we're doing at Legacy. The parents and students have been overjoyed with our new facility and wonderful staff of Legacy, the teachers, and the support team. We have worked through the entire sixteen-page list of items for a charter school. We were treated like a brand-new school, and we took on that challenge to obtain every single document needed. It was time-consuming, but we are happy to see that we got the entire list completed, and to my knowledge, we are currently in one-hundred percent compliance. I will continue. Thank you. I will continue to work hard to remain in compliance. Compliance has always been something that I strive for, and I will do whatever it takes to remain as such. We have already hosted a family fun event that was a huge success with well over several hundred folks in attendance. We also hosted our open house where nearly every child was represented, and we are rocking and rolling into our brand-new school year. I've been working with the Titusville Police Department to harden our facility and ensure that it's safe. The police have been on-site daily, and I have also hired a guardian that will be starting his official training on Friday. In addition to these steps that I have taken, I've also hired a full-time bookkeeper who's been going through training with Green Apple staff. The Green Apple team has been providing professional services, but they have been going above and beyond to help us out. They are making sure my staff is trained and understands about compliance procedures in all areas. This help will be invaluable to us as we proceed. Finally, I will add that I have been fully committed to this school. As a principal with over fifteen years' experience and over twenty-two years in education total, I reluctantly admit that this is probably the hardest thing I've ever had to do. I'm putting in hours that are way beyond what anyone would expect. I've been working daily until every night until the late hours and starting very early in the morning. I'm doing this because I want nothing more than for this school to succeed. I believe that Legacy can be the school that the community will be proud of for years to come. I want to help to make Legacy grow and become a fully-vetted steam school that's synonymous with educational success. Please allow us to continue. Thank you.
Cindy Gilmore, Constance Ortiz, Braxton Paget.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Mullins. Congratulations. My name is Cindy Gilmore, and this is my fifteenth year working with Constance Ortiz and Odyssey Charter School in the capacity of compliance manager and liaison to the Board of Directors. And the last nine years of those fifteen, I have been working in some capacity, in the same capacity, with Green Apple School Management. To give a brief background, Constance Ortiz is the CEO of Green Apple School Management and also the founder of Odyssey Charter School. She's given a twenty-year commitment to a very unique model and has won the Charter School Pioneer Award for her work with charter schools. Green Apple currently serves as the educational service provider of Odyssey Charter School. Based upon this reputation and the success of Odyssey, Green Apple was asked to lend the support to Legacy Academy Charter as they geared up to begin their second year. My role is to help them with their compliance and working with the organization of their Board of Directors. As we worked through the pre-opening checklist that is actually for a first-year school, I was quickly reminded of several mediations that Odyssey has had with the district, and one in particular was a mediation I was involved with, with compliance, and that involved the district, Odyssey, and several charter schools. The main focus of the mediation was classified as overreaching and overregulation. The main... The outcome of the mediation was positive, but I've witnessed this resurface as I've been working with Legacy and their progress. In spite of all that, over the last month and a half, we were able to bring Legacy to one-hundred percent compliance in all of the areas that the district has required for the school opening, and we will continue to support the school and help maintain compliance work with their board as well. With the school having this strong support and this strong willingness to succeed, we ask that you come to an agreement and lift this ninety-day notice for the school. Thank you very much for your time.
Constance Ortiz, Braxton Paget, Rachel Tisch.
Honorable Chairman, board members, and Superintendent. My name is Constance Ortiz, and I live in Floridana Beach. As some of you know, I've been working with charter schools for over twenty years now and am the founder of Odyssey and Odyssey Prep, as well as the CEO of Green Apple School Management, developing unique, green, and healthy holistic schools. Both schools in Palm Bay did quite well this past year. With very high levels of poverty, they both outperformed every traditional public school in Palm Bay, even with Odyssey Prep having an estimated one-hundred percent poverty population. I say this not to brag, but to share with you just how challenging it is to birth a charter school, because Odyssey Prep failed its first year, but now it's leading the pack in Palm Bay. Charter schools like Legacy require a lot of support when they open. With an incredible and dedicated teaching staff, the school has a need for better-developed processes and procedures operationally. Legacy did make mistakes. We have assisted them to correct many deficiencies, which were outlined in letters sent to you by the board chair and school attorney, and will continue to support the school to get to a higher degree of organization and board compliance and management. The new law that passed this July raises the bar for school boards, and it has been clarified that there needs to be clear and convincing evidence that a school should be closed down. The law states that academic failure should be the primary consideration. The school was graded a C their first year and placed third out of seven in Titusville. Their ELA proficiency and overall gains were higher than the six surrounding schools. In reference to the past year, School Choice conducted multiple site visits and had countless meetings with Legacy. The school was run ragged by district overreach and requests, many of which were not contractual nor statutory. Contract modifications were requested for simple changes in staffing plans or curriculum resources. I have never seen this in twenty years of operating charter schools in this county and others. Odyssey, too, requested several mediations during Ms. Archer's appointment to School Choice for what Odyssey considered overregulation and overreach, where they were successful in removing approximately eighty percent of the overregulation during a particular mediation. You directed the School Choice Office to work with this school. It has not. In fact, the relationship has been very negative. I believe the Choice Office should follow the directions set by the board. The FLDOE notified the school recently that its extension was approved for its CSP grant for four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. They need access to these funds. We would like to ask the school board to save legal fees and staff resources and enter into a settlement with the school. Please lift the ninety-day closure and everything that would stop this school from accessing its grant. Please consider giving the school some time to settle and then conduct the annual site visit, which every other charter school receives in this county. And finally, please provide oversight for School Choice, because all schools deserve support. Thank you.
Braxton Paget, Rachel Tisch, Kajante Price.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As always, it's good to be in front of you again. My hope is that tonight could be the last time I'm in front of you, at least, at least under these circumstances. You've heard over the last couple of months all the things that Legacy has done to try to rectify the deficiencies that the school acknowledges existed. I don't want to spend this time going back over those. We sent a letter to you guys, I think, two weeks ago, kind of outlining, in bullet-point form, everything that we've done. This... We're really proud to see that this school has opened. It's had a successful launch. They're in their new facility, and we're really proud of what they're doing. They have a great principal. They have an outstanding management company who is helping to guide them through this. And as Ms. Ortiz has kind of highlighted, starting a charter school is not easy, and this school faced, you know, more bumps than maybe some of the other charter schools that you guys have started here. One of the things that we've heard is concerns that this is the same school, that despite these changes, it's the same old school. I think that that's so far from the truth. First of all, you've seen today, a lot of the people that were up here speaking on behalf of Legacy were not here before. They were not here before this ninety-day termination period began. These are people who are very experienced, and these are, in fact, some of the very best people that Legacy could have asked for, and we're very proud of that. This certainly is not a point that we want to belabor, but last time that I was before you, I indicated that we were not getting good communication from the Choice Office. And from my understanding from you was, there was instruction given that they should be communicating with us as to what still needed to be fixed. That never occurred despite us reaching out on multiple occasions. And it's not a point we want to belabor, but there's no charter school in this county or anywhere in the state of Florida that's going to succeed if they don't have the Choice Office as an ally on their side. What we would like to see happen is we're not asking you just to blanket lift the ninety-day notice. I understand that you guys probably still have concerns. What we would like to see happen is, one of the things that we think could happen is that we go to mediation and have a third party try to get an agreement that secures the interests of both sides. I understand that the school board members, you all have your concerns. We certainly have some of our own concerns. We would like to see greater cooperation going forward with the Choice Office, and we believe that we can achieve this through an agreement, and that's what we... I hope that you will consider discussing tonight. Thank you.
Rachel Tisch, Kajante Price, and Art Garmoio.
Good evening. I am a proud parent of two children in the Legacy family, and I am here to show my support. And, like I said, I am a parent. I have two boys that currently attend. We have been with Legacy from the very beginning, so we have experienced a lot of hurdles, a lot of roadblocks, and we have stuck through it. And we have stuck through it because I initially chose Legacy for this curriculum, smaller classrooms, and, you know, a personal environment. But most of all, Charlene, Ms. Mumford, she has a vision, and I believe and I share in that vision. And every day, I see them fighting to make this happen, and my kids get to see that, too. I apologize. So, yes, there has been very... There has been so many hurdles. Despite that, my son ended up having the most amazing first year ever last year. The first few months were rough, but he ended up very stable in his kindergarten year. His kindergarten teacher is actually right outside that door, and I could not have asked for a better environment for my kids. And now, tomorrow, my son starts kindergarten with the same teacher, and my eldest... My middle son is in first grade, and he loves his teacher. He loves the new building. It's incredible. It's really good. I apologize, I keep looking down. I don't have glasses, and I can't blow it up. Okay. I'm so sorry. So, as I said, my son had such a great first year because of the teachers, because of the people, but he also had a great year because he learned that with hard work and dedication and determination, you can fight for what you think is right and for what you want, and that is what we're seeing every day. And I appreciate that. We all want what is best for our kids, and I know for me that I have people fighting for my children's success, and I can't ask for anything else. So, taking into consideration whatever, you know, you need to, but from a parent's perspective, I don't want my children to go anywhere else. I step into that school, and that's my family, and I trust them with my children and my children's future, and they want that for all the kids. And everybody is equal, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Kajante Price, Art Garmoio, and, sorry, Destiny Lusterman. Sorry, is Kajante? Nope? Go ahead, you're up next, then. Thank you.
I'm just... Good evening, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen. My granddaughter is attending Legacy, and I just want you to know that it is a great school, and please support it. It's short and simple. Please. Please.
Thank you, sir. Destiny Lusterman, Alex Brown, and Melanie Schatzberger.
Good evening, School Board members and superintendents. My name is Destiny Lusterman, and I'm speaking on behalf of Legacy Academy Charter School. We have improved so much, we have a better school now, and we have more teachers, and we're really, really safe. Also, some kids that just joined this year that hated their old school love their new school. I even love Legacy. We are never out of an adult's eyesight or supervision. Kids at Legacy love the school, and I should know because I am one of those kids. I mean, at my old school, I was bullied a lot, basically every day. Now, I would like to thank all of the teachers, like Ms. Burnett, Ms. Schatzberger, Mr. Ramusen, Mr. R. I can't say it. I would like to say that we are Alliance, and we are proud of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Destiny. Alex, fantastic. Alex Brown, Melanie Schatzberger, and Christina Weaver.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Alex Brown. I moved to Bavard about two years ago with my family. My company decided to relocate me because we had a trying store, similar to what the Lions are going through right now. And the word termination comes up as very harsh, but in business, termination has to come up at some point. But what I love about the Lions, about Legacy, just like my store that I'm now overseeing, we never give up. When you look at a pack of Lions, the female lion is usually the most aggressive. We may think the male is aggressive, the female lion is actually the most aggressive because she wants to make sure that her kids are safe and wants to make sure that the best happens for the kids. I look at Ms. Mumford as the female lion. I look at our school and see the dedication that each and every teacher has to ensure that our kids learn and excel. Termination is just a word. It doesn't bother me, it shouldn't bother anyone that's here. I thank you for giving us the opportunity to be better, and that's how we're going to take it. Every event that I go to for the school, I see everyone more and more engaged, and the number one thing that I look for from my children is when I walk into a building, how do they react? The first day my daughter went to Legacy, she decided to stay. My wife was beside herself. You want to stay? Yes. Never happened. She's always wanted to come back home because something. My daughter feels safe, my daughter learns. My wife does a lot of blogs on social media with her reading, and when I see my six-year-old taking up a book and telling me, Dad, I want to read to you, when I hear her come to home and tell me how her day was, most students don't do that anymore. It starts from what's happening in the school, and I can tell you as a proud Legacy parent, that there's a lot of good things happening. There's a lot of teachers that have a lot of joy in their hearts, there's a lot of teachers that love our kids, and that's the number one thing. Decisions have to be made, but I want the decision to be made about the kids, and to be focused on the kids. First year being a C, I'll take that, because next year I'm asking for a B or better, and I know that they'll deliver. Thank you, my name is Alex Brown.
Melanie Schatzberger, Christina Weaver, Rachel Breckenridge.
Good evening, School Board members and Superintendent Mullins. I'm speaking on behalf of Melinda Villan, who's a mother of Gwendolyn Villan. I'm going to read it because I didn't write it, but I can tell you I'm also a parent, and I'm pretty passionate about my school. Dear members of the School Board, I was able to speak last time in person to speak on how wonderful Legacy Academy Charter School is. I cannot this time, so instead I am writing this letter to you. My daughter was a kindergartner at Legacy last year. She received straight fours on her academics at the end of the year, as well as the principal's award, and is now a first grader. She's a wonderful independent reader, she loves science, she adores art, all these things were fostered and grown under the staff at Legacy. I am constantly amazed and impressed by the things she had learned and continues to learn. Coming from one of the best public school systems in the county, Fairfax County, education is extremely important to me. I enjoy the hands-on STEAM approach that Legacy provides. It mirrors the gifted and talented program I had growing up. Less books and more hands-on, Project Lead the Way has helped my child in her problem-solving skills, her teachers have progressed, her education in a way that I am extremely pleased with, and the staff loves the children and makes them feel at home. I am asking that you please lift the ninety-day termination and give the school a chance to really show how wonderful it is. Please let Legacy Lions continue to roar. Thank you, Melinda Villan.
Christina Weaver, Rachel Breckenridge, Carl Lusterman.
Good evening. I wanted to remind you guys quickly of a topic of conversation the last time I spoke and why I chose Legacy. My daughter attended another public school in kindergarten and was lost for three hours. It wasn't safe. We drove, my husband drove and sped through another school zone to look for her in this neighborhood, because the school had no regards to where she was at, had no concern when we called frantic, trying to figure out where she was at. Kindergarten, or first grade for Legacy, she excelled, excelled. In kindergarten at this other school, she actually regressed. She was two students out of two students that were on grade level. When she went to Legacy, she left for the summer reading, speaking, she's extremely reserved, but due to project-based learning and the way they learn there, and the smaller school, the smaller classrooms, and the more engaged families, I have other parents that know her name. That's exciting. As we pulled up this year for second grade for Legacy, I walk in and there's one entry. I was very worried this year. For the first time, she's going in second grade, we heard a lot over the summer, a lot of school shootings, were two school shootings, major school shootings last year. For the first time, we're really having to worry about this. I pull up into the open house, and we met our teacher, and it was so organized. We go to the cafeteria, the principal greets everybody, tells us the plan, is very strict about security, very strict about the curriculum. I left feeling safe, even though I see what we see on the news. I go to drop her off, first day of school, and I was sad, I couldn't walk in her classroom. They wanted us to leave her there, let the kids walk in, they didn't want a bunch of parents in the school. And I was sad as a parent, but at the same time, I felt safe, because there's a lot of parents that would be flooding through that school. She came home from her first day at Legacy, and she was so excited to tell me about how they built these things with marshmallows. I'm excited to hear Ms. D., who's her teacher, tell me today, they did this speed science day, where they go to different stations, and Ms. D. tells me, I ask, is Taylor speaking? Is she talking? Because she's so reserved. Yeah, I would never guess she's a shy child. That's exciting to me, because she wasn't that way in the other schools. So, I feel Legacy is safe, the curriculum is there, they're my choice school, and that's where I want my daughter to go, so I want you guys to be able to support that. Thank you.
Rachel Breckenridge and Carl Lusterman.
Good evening, Board. I am here both as a parent and a staff member. I am one of the first staff that were hired on at Legacy. I chose to, I chose to take a position at Legacy Charter School because I absolutely nine-hundred percent believe in the vision that Shirley Mumford had and shared with me about including all students and having the STEAM program and teaching every child at their ability, including all pieces of education and social-emotional education, everything that needs to be touched on to build a child into a strong, productive member of society. Based on that, I also chose to pull my own child and bring him with me to Legacy Academy, because while there, the staff, everyone pulls together, the community, the parents, everyone is working every day at the highest level for the success of the students. It's not about any one person, it's not about anyone saying, oh, well, you know, that principal or that teacher, those people are amazing and they're bringing the school along. No, it is a team. Every single family works together, every single staff member and their families work together, community members are coming in, the Titusville Police Department has officers constantly rotating through daily, not just an officer assigned, but other officers coming in, everyone coming in to talk to the students, to truly build a family-community school. The North Area needs that, wants that, and wants this to continue. I am asking that as you look at all the pieces, think about all those children and the children who continue to want to come to Legacy. They're growing, they're learning, they're happy, they're productive. Please allow that to continue. Thank you.
Carl Lusterman.
Members of the Board, how are you doing tonight? Hopefully, this will be my last time having to come before use. The last meeting was pretty intense, I think, for everybody involved, both parties, a lot of heated debate in and outside of this room. There's been a lot of mixed feelings over the entire summer regarding this ninety-day notice that you have sent out twice now, so, you know, we're on edge as far as, you know, whether or not the approval is going to go through or not. I work day in, day out with some of the school staff, including Ms. Mumford, as well as Ms. Breckenridge, who is my son's teacher. You already heard what my daughter had to say regarding her new school. We will not be putting them back in public school, as I stated in the last meeting. If you do not release the funds, and if you do not allow Legacy a chance to, you know, show the Board what it can do, as well as the rest of the state, then I have no choice but to pull my kids out and seek education elsewhere, and it will not be within your school system, it will not be within your rules. You know, Legacy is based off of this vision that the student should not be forced to learn something, basically to a test. You know, that's what the School Board has implemented, what, some two decades ago, with the various tests, the ASVABs, the FASFA, and the various other things, because parents said, well, we don't see what the schools are teaching our kids, we don't see what they're learning. So, you come up with these different tests to basically show general society, hey, you know, this is what their test scores are in this area, or, you know, this is what they're doing in math, or this is what they're doing in language arts, and that's fine, but it's broke, it don't work, because you're forcing the teachers to teach to that test. At Legacy, we don't do that, as you've heard many times tonight. We are a family, and we are very proud that we can teach our students and have our children learn in a way that is actually beneficial to them. My kids love to go to school. They couldn't wait for the first day of school, especially my daughter. You know, she wanted to go all summer. Sorry, but it doesn't work that way. You know, I'm happy that my kids are in Legacy. They're finally learning the way that they should learn, and the way that they should be allowed to learn. I appreciate it, your time, and I hope that you make the right decision.
That concludes our public comment. I do thank, once again, each of you for taking the time to express your concerns and share your opinions and your suggestions. Your partnership is important to us. I do have a request for a quick restroom break before we continue. And we will take five minutes, literally five minutes, so we can come back and discuss, please.
Nobody's allowed to go that way, only that.
Only that way, to the restroom. Back in session. Thank you for your patience. All right, we have three discussion points this evening. We'll start with the first one, Legacy Charter 90-day termination status. While I asked to put that on the agenda, it was by request from several people. And just to reiterate, this is a discussion point. There is no action to be actually taken here unless some action comes from a Board member. But we are here to discuss, obviously, where we sit and things that have happened, and interactions we've had with both Legacy, their counsel and those things. So I'll open it up to the Board as to discuss and open for discussion. Does anybody have any comments and make any comments regarding the 90-day termination status? Ms. Belford.
So, obviously, with Legacy being in my district, this is an issue that I am probably more involved with than most of the Board members. Had the opportunity to visit the new location, not since they opened. I'll get back out there soon, I promise you guys. Been a little bit crazy. But was there before opening, and certainly is a beautiful facility. I feel as though the team at Legacy has worked hard to try to turn things around. One of my, I guess, kind of points of frustration, and I've had this conversation with staff as well, so, because I didn't want to catch anyone off guard. One of my points of frustration is I feel very strongly that when we had our discussion here on the 90-day termination, and when we had our discussion in the informal hearing, felt very much like the Board members were pretty much in agreement that we were not driving to see Legacy closed, and our understanding of that 90-day termination was that there was still an opportunity to cure. As you all know, we've had some input from Ms. Enbal along the way, and the indication now seems to be that there are things that just are not curable. And while I understand that some things are not curable, I think that we, as a team, gave the impression that if they fixed what they could fix, we weren't driving to close them. And so I feel like we need to have an opportunity to discuss that as a Board and decide, what is our intention, where do we want things to go? They've done an enormous amount of work, as you heard from several people today, as far as responding to some of the things that were mentioned at the informal hearing, of getting a new principal, shifts in board, getting some management guidance, partnering with the Arnold Law Firm. With that being said, I also want to acknowledge that there is some frustration on the part of our staff here at BPS, because it was a really long time of them providing information of things that needed to be addressed, of things, reoccurring issues, and it seemed as though there was little action until the 90-day termination, as far as really trying to fix processes and system issues. And so I do think it's important to acknowledge that as well, but I think since we had that 90-day termination discussion and our informal hearing, they have worked hard. And I feel as though our intent was that that would be considered going forward. So you heard several people mention, perhaps it's too early in the process to lift the 90-day termination completely. And I would agree that there probably is an opportunity for us to see a pattern for longer, longer than a few weeks, of positive change. But I also do not feel like it was our intent to shut them down without any opportunity for cure. And so I would certainly welcome discussion from the Board as to what your desires and understandings are. Certainly, there were a lot of dropped balls along the way, a lot of things that probably could have gone a lot more smoothly. But at the end of the day, we are considering kids and their experience. And so I just want to make sure that we stay focused and we understand the intent of our action, or we clarify the intent of our action and make sure that we are driving toward the outcome that we were all expecting, because I can tell you that's not where I am. It was not my understanding that the 90-day termination was a final.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. As always, very objective and well-reasoned. Thank you. Before I ask for Board member input, Ms. Enbal, can you tell us what the continuation status is of the ALJ hearing, and what that means, and how long a continuance goes for, or how long it can be continued for, assuming both parties want to continue?
So, the ALJ proceeding is still moving, sort of. It's kind of in abeyance at the moment. The last order granting, we had joint request for continuance, because the hearing was supposed to start tomorrow and continue on Thursday. But because there had been some discussion among Board members and back and forth, it was determined to ask for that joint motion for continuance, because if we were to cancel the hearing or whatever tonight, it wouldn't bode, you know, it was just not right to put the ALJ in that position. So the last order granting joint request for continuance requires that the party shall confirm and advise the undersigned administrative law judge in writing no later than September 3rd as to the status of the matter, the length of time required for the final hearing, and several mutually agreeable dates for rescheduling the final hearing, should one be necessary.
Thank you. So September 3rd is when we need to make that?
And as a reminder, you do not have a meeting on August 28th.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, then I'll open up to other Board members. Ms. Steskovic.
I have a couple of questions. One, Ms. Enbal, do you know what the $450,000 in funds they were discussing, like a couple of the speakers were talking about?
I only think it would probably be the CSP grant. And I don't, we don't have control of that. I would have to confer. I believe the state has control of that, and until they feel it's to be released, it's not something that we can do.
And my next question is, there was a gentleman that spoke about the option of mediation. Can you tell me what that would look like, what that would mean?
So in my last email to you, I told you you have essentially three choices, three options. You can move forward with the termination, or the ALJ determination, and let the ALJ make that decision, or you can withdraw or rescind your 90-day termination letter, which started all of this, or something else. And that something else could be mediation, it could be some sort of settlement agreement. But we would need for the Board to provide direction to the superintendent and myself so that we could see what that something else would look like.
A settlement agreement, would that happen at mediation?
Yes.
And who would attend mediation? You?
We would probably, it would probably be, yes, in staff, and it would be Mr. Arnold and his firm, and staff from Legacy as well. And basically, mediation usually works as, here's the issues, and here's the issues, and come to some sort of agreement in the middle. Okay, thank you.
Any other Board member? Mr. Segler.
I think Mrs. Belford's initial point is extremely relevant to how we proceed. The intent of this Board when we issued that letter, I think personally, is what should guide us going forward. I don't want to contest any of the legalities as to whether or not a 90-day termination is irreversible by statute. It's, I think, what this Board is intended to do, is what usually guides us. I may have misled the Board at that first, when we did that letter, because I've been through this before. And we've reversed 90-day terminations. It's always been my understanding, this was like the shot across the bow, that, "All right, time to get your act together. Let's get everything right, and let's focus, work together, and move forward." If that is not the case of a 90-day termination letter, I would have hoped somebody would have told me, "Andy, you misspoke at the Board meeting. You're wrong." Don't really care whether it was right or wrong. I care what the intent of this Board is. And I agree with Ms. Belford that we should move forward unless another Board member disagrees with our original intent, as an opportunity for the school to rectify their problems. There are deficiencies, clearly, that are not rectifiable, because they are in the past. I think what we're concerned about is whether or not they are doing the right things going forward. At the informal hearing, obviously, we were all in agreement that there needed to be better oversight and focus. I made the statement that I don't even think I consider supporting keeping the school open without a successful management company stepping in, and a principal with a track record of success to lead the, they've done that. I do have some concerns about process going forward. One of the issues I have is if we were to rescind the letter of termination, my understanding is it wipes the slate clean of past deficiencies. That kind of bothers me, because I don't think we should treat them going forward as if they hadn't done anything wrong at all in the past. And I would want to know that, in the event there was deficiencies or ignoring guidance going forward that was important to the success of the school, that we wouldn't, that we could take into consideration past performance, past behavior, past attitude, to make a decision that whether things have turned around or not. I think, I think, I know we all want to believe that they're turning around and that the attitude's right, and that they have the guidance, they have the legal assistance and all that. But I don't like the fact that I've been led to believe that if we reverse this, it wipes the slate clean as if nothing ever happened. Doesn't work that way. I don't like the fact that we went into this with an informal hearing and acknowledgement of their request for a formal hearing with an ALJ, that now, after the fact, we find out that supposedly ALJ's decision is final, whereas past statutes said that the decision of the ALJ comes before this Board to be adopted or modified, basically saying that we could say, "Yes, we agree with the ALJ," or, "No, we disagree," and we have final decision, like we do on virtually everything else in our world, or any other hearing. Personally, I disagree with the interpretation of the statute, because it doesn't say that we don't have final say. It says that we don't have to, it doesn't have to come before us. And I just, I just really, it's over all these years, it really frustrates me when an interpretation of law is what we can't do, because it doesn't say that we can do it. It doesn't say that we can't make final decision, it doesn't say clearly that they have final say. I'm not comfortable getting into a situation where we don't, where we're out of the picture. I think that's wrong. I think that it's necessary, as the elected body of education in this county, for, if we're going to have oversight, then we have oversight, and we should have a say in the future of any school that's a public school. What I had asked for, and I don't believe I've seen in a forum that clarifies to me, without being spoon-fed every deficiency, is like a checklist of, okay, these are the deficiencies, this is what's being rectified going forward. I also have some concerns as to whether some of the deficiencies are relevant to our oversight of making a decision, such as whether or not a specific curriculum was applied or not. I don't know if that's really within our purview. I always understood our purview to be overall performance and financial solvency. I guess the others just compound upon it. I'm concerned about mediation, because it sounds to me, if we go to mediation, we're not involved anymore, and it's out of our control. I don't like that option either. And now we're up against the wall that apparently we're required to make a, assemble, we have to report to the ALJ a decision by September 3rd, which is before our next meeting.
We do.
As to whether or not we're going to stay the course, or whether we're going to lift the termination.
And one of those notices could be, the parties are still working out an agreement, if that's, if that's the status.
The reason that concerns me is our next Board meeting's September 11th.
Correct. I think, though, what, what, so if we can-
Counsel's saying is that the, there has to be a communication with the ALJ. It doesn't have to be, "This is what we're doing." It could be, we, whatever. I mean, there's multiple things, is that correct? You have to communicate with the ALJ.
We do. We have to communicate, and the communication could be, we're moving forward, or it could be, we're working on settlement, and we need, but we would have to give normally a definitive time period within which we think we can either settle and/or move forward with the ALJ determination.
That being said, what I would like to see happen is, I would like to know what Board members would like to see as evidence to withdraw the 90-day termination by our next meeting, so that we can make that decision, before it's out of our control. And if that's possible to do, without letting this fall into the hands of the ALJ, or mediation when we don't have say, I think that's the course that we should go, because I think that's part of our original intent, as Ms. Belford very appropriately pointed out, right off the bat, is that I think we should go with our intent when the letter was issued, as opposed to what the statute says. And I don't even know if maybe that's a change in statute over the past years, and maybe we were doing it right in the past, or maybe we were doing it wrong in the past. I don't know. All I know is, what was our intent? And so I'd like to see, I would like the Board to tell staff, or even tell Legacy, "All right, show us what the deficiencies are, show us what was done on a, without a 90-page document outlining all the issues."
Mr. Susan?
Yeah, so, a couple of quick questions. Does anybody know, if it is within our, within our control of the money that they are talking about, what is the holdback on our end? Do you know, Ms. Enbal?
I wouldn't be able to speak to it completely. Ms. Archer would.
Ms. Archer, could you please come up?
We received notification from the Florida Department of Education that those funds were being held by the state until this 90-day termination was resolved. And so we have no control over releasing or not releasing. We've been dictated to how we need to proceed.
And is, in the event that we decided to go to a mediation, that would still hold?
Correct.
If we went to a mediation, we are no longer going to the 90-day termination, correct? And if that's the case, would that be lifting that to allow them to receive the money?
We would have to inform among Mr. Emerson's office of our next proceedings, and then they would advise us accordingly.
Mr. Emerson's our attorneys that are outside counsel.
No, no, Mr. Emerson is in charge of parent options at the DOE.
Okay. Just seems to me that if it's holding back because of the-
I don't think, I don't think we have, I don't think Ms. Archer can answer that question. It's not her decision to make.
Also, they also have a Financial Corrective Action Plan that's due to the state that has not been approved or processed because of this as well. So there's a couple of facets that are in play here.
Which comes to my next question, is that I heard somebody say that they are at 100% compliance. Is that correct? And if not, can you list, as Andy stated, the things that we are looking at that are not compliant?
So you have two different things going on here. You have the pre-opening checklist, which is our benchmark of any time a new facility opens that we are looking at. We just have their current lease, which we are reviewing, so to say they're in 100% compliance is not completely accurate. Those things need to be reviewed, and we do have some concerns as we read over the lease today, as well as some of their insurances that they have to comply with. So to say, you know, it takes us time to review once they submit these documents, which most of it was due 15 days before school began, and we're still just now getting them.
So, just in curiosity, I understand the lease, I understand the insurance. A lot of the issues that we were dealing with before, have those been rectified to this point?
So then, again, then you go to the 90-day termination, which some of those things have not been rectified and cannot be cured.
Can you give me examples?
Yes, sir. They have ESE services that were- They have ESE services that were not provided to their students for anywhere from 30 to 90 days, and they have never addressed compensatory education. Those students are -- deserve to have those services provided to them. If they are no longer at Legacy, then it will be our responsibility to serve those students at -- on our dime. If they are still at Legacy, then the Legacy owes them those services. And they've never addressed that in any of their --
So, what I'm hearing you say is that there are currently students that have need ESE services that have entered into the new facility and are not receiving that?
So, not necessarily this year. Again, that's 90-day termination. Last year, from August through as long as early October, there were not services provided to every student. That includes gifted as well.
So, it's kind of hard for them to go give those services back to the past, correct? I mean, am I running around in circles here?
I don't think so.
No, I think there are compensatory services.
Yes, sir.
That --
We have to make up those hours that were not provided to the students.
Okay.
Ms. Enval, can that kind of stuff be worked out in some type of mediation where they --
It could.
If the students are back in one of our schools, they could have to pay potentially, or they would commit to giving the students that have continued with them the services that they're due?
If we create a list of things that you want to cover, the school board can still have control in that aspect. If you have a list of things that you want covered in some sort of mediation, settlement agreement, whatever, that could be included in there.
Is -- sorry to hijack, Mr. Susan. Is Mr. Ziegler's statement correct that if we go to mediation, we don't get a say anymore? Because I feel like we direct you on what we want to happen.
So, the board would still have to come back and approve the mediated settlement agreement. So we would still need school board input into what particular aspects you want to have included in that agreement.
Okay. One more question, sorry. The -- if we go to mediation, does that wipe the 90-day -- wipe all this stuff clean so that there's no -- that was a concern, I think, of --
So procedurally, I think we could also talk to Mr. Arnold, too. Procedurally, the mediated settlement agreement would, in exchange for the board to withdraw the 90-day termination, this is what the parties agreed to, so then that would kind of -- the 90-day termination letter is what started the process and why we're before an administrative law judge. If the 90-day termination letter goes away, then the administrative law judge no longer has jurisdiction to rule on that. Does that kind of make sense?
I think Ms. Deskovic's question, or at least I thought her question, was if there was a motion or a directive, it would be through a motion because we have an approved motion now, so it has to be a motion to supersede it, that directed to enter into mediation, that does not have any effect on the 90-day -- today's 90-day thing. Only after a settlement would be reached during mediation would then the 90-day agreement be --
Right.
I think that was part of what your question was, too. It's not like it would go away today.
That's -- yeah.
Can I ask one --
Ms. Belford?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Enval, just for a point of clarification, is there a requirement that it be mediated? Could you and Mr. Arnold not sit down and negotiate a compliance agreement?
We could do that.
So there's not a requirement that I'm aware of?
There's no requirement for mediation. Is that correct? No, there's no requirement.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Susan?
So, what I'm hearing you say is that there's a couple of things that are in the past, we have a couple of things going forward. Where a couple of concerns that I have is that as long as we are in this process of going back and forth and coming over here and this person says this and this person says that, and we're in mediation and doing all that stuff, we're holding up the advancement of these kids, one way or the other. Whether we make the decision to go towards -- whether we make the decision to go towards the ending of it or to allow them to continue, we're holding this whole process up. And so I guess my question is, is if we decide to move towards mediation, is that -- what is that? One day we work out a couple of things and then you come back to us and present it in September, on September 11th? Or what is that?
It's whatever. We can work within the confines of the board's direction. If you want to direct staff and myself to work with Legacy and their legal team to come up with some agreement, we can certainly do that, and we can do it as quickly as possible.
So, we agree, so let me ask you this. So we say you have to do X, Y, and Z. They say, we'll do it. We say, okay, we'll pull the termination letter? And then --
I would recommend you pull it, just in case we can't come to an agreement.
So what I'm hearing you say is that we say you do X, Y, and Z, they do this, then we will enter into ending the 90-day termination letter, but that may take a while before we get that? I'm worried about the concern about the time is where I'm at.
So your next -- your next meeting is September 11th?
Right.
So, depending on what the board directs, we can certainly work towards meeting that deadline, and it could be a two-part board. I'm trying to just kind of read from what I've heard. It could be a two-part board decision to approve the settlement agreement and at the same time withdraw or rescind the 90-day termination letter.
So here's my -- some of the hooks that I see coming is that we have ESE services that are supposed to be provided. So in the event that we said you have to provide these ESE services, how do they do that before September 11th if there's a host of hours that they have to catch up?
So there would probably have to be a plan moving forward to address that particular issue. There's a lot of little details in that. We don't want to get too detailed, but enough to show our staff that they have provided those compensatory hours that are owed or have compensated the district for doing so if those students are at our district schools. I don't know.
So if we go to mediation, then we would say to the administrative law judge, we are pushing back this decision until after September 11th. We are entering into a negotiation where we're going to try to come up with some kind of a plan, and in the event that those issues are brought forward, then we will be able to make that decision on September 11th to pull the 90-day termination.
If that's the plan, the board wants to direct us to do so, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
And maybe Mr. Arnold wants to also chime in on his thoughts.
That's what I was -- the next step that I was going to do is ask Mr. Arnold if he'd come up here and just kind of chime in on some of this stuff.
While he's coming up, I'll just make just real quick comments and keep it very short. I understand the passion involved behind it. Several times, people have mentioned how hard Legacy has worked. I do not deny that. But I also want to make sure that we know that our staff has worked extremely hard as well. They have put in a yeoman's effort to, as they do with every school. And unfortunately, we have some speakers that disagree with that or have pointed the finger, and that, to me, is unfortunate. Mr. Ziegler, you mentioned early on intent. I agree with you completely, but I also listened to your and a couple other board members to very targeted public comments during that board -- during that informal hearing in May that stated what things you would need to see. Included was a new, you know, changing of the principal, new leadership, a management company with reputable qualities, and certainly some of those things have happened. One of the big things, though, was the board, to be quite honest with you. Once again, at that time, we had the chairman of the board pointing the finger to everybody except for themselves. We now have taken the principal, not we, Legacy has taken the principal that led them during the year of issues and nonresponsiveness to the numerous letters of notice and elevated that person to chair of the board, which does not give me a bit of confidence that they have understood the governance issues that are associated with it, associated with running a school of this magnitude and of this responsibility to the community. I think it was very clear in what the board said at that time, and certainly what you said, Mr. Ziegler, was there needed to be a massive change. I don't see that as a massive change. To me, that is an issue that I have still. Mr. Paget said, you know, that the school has acknowledged deficiencies. I took notes on every single speaker. The only two people that acknowledged deficiencies tonight were the people that the Legacy Board is paying, their attorney and Ms. Ortiz from the management company. No one on that board, no one, accepted responsibility. Instead, it was, once again, as Ms. Chase said, it is -- the board has done this to us, wasted taxpayer dollars, and certainly I take -- as far as Ms. Archer's office, I take offense at that because that is her job, that is what they are supposed to do, and I think they do a very good job at it. I find it very disappointing that we're in this place. You're exactly right, the intent was there. I'm just not completely convinced that the gravity of the situation was -- has actually been acknowledged, except by a couple of people that are not even part of the actual administration of the school. So, that's my comments. I know you asked Mr. Arnold --
Arnold?
Sorry, Sean. Mr. Arnold, come up. Sean, can you give us your -- and just so you know, because you weren't here, Mr. Paget was the one, Braxton was the one who brought up this mediation concept, something that we have not really ever discussed, and so I think that is where our questions lie.
Sure. So, thank you for coming. Mr. Mullins, I look forward to meeting with you and talking with you at some point in the future. In a situation like this, in any time litigation's involved, the parties can agree to do basically anything that's lawful that they want to do. I think that there's been conversations between Ms. Enval, Ms. Nutcher, who represents staff, and us about a settlement all along. I think that the direction that staff was taking it is that these things that occurred in the past are not curable. If something wasn't filed in October on time, I can't cure that, nobody can cure that. Compensatory services can be cured if that is something that's necessary to be done. This can be done through a formal mediation. I completely agree from the outside, looking at things that the school has a lot of culpability for why we're here. There's no question about that. And I think that in my private discussions with folks, they understand that. If that didn't come across today, then I apologize about that. I think that staff has very legitimate concerns what happened prior to that. We have concerns that we want to address what happened after the 90-day letter was issued. I think that that can be done through Ms. Enval and I having a conversation with staff, with our group. We can do it through a professional mediator. I've been involved, my firm has been involved with four mediations with this Choice Office through Odyssey alone over the last few years, and we had another one that involved all of them. At that mediation, Ms. Neese came to it as a member of the board. I thought it was very effective. I think it was very enlightening to the board to realize what was happening with the charter school. And I think that it meant to a very good, from our perspective, result in the mediation. And I think it changed the relationship between us and the Choice Office. So, Ms. Enval and I are certainly allow -- we certainly work together well professionally and collaboratively. We can work this out. Any one of you could attend that one meeting. We can have a professional mediator at which staff, myself, staff, Ms. Enval, and one of you attend. We can do any of the above. Or we can just work it out, she can circulate comments, and you have all of that. But I think it would be very enlightening for one of you to attend those settlement talks, whether it occurs in person via conference call or whatever. I think you point, if it's you, Mr. Craig, or whomever wants to volunteer, come, be part of the process. It's not something that you have to be remote from. You don't have to. But I think it would be something that would work well. It would give you an insight into what is going on. The, you know, I'm not going to get into a back and forth with Ms. Archer about some of the comments that she made about the status that's here. I think it's really a question of where do we go from here? In terms of holding, Mr. Ziegler, you're concerned about holding us accountable for what happened in the past. Corrective action plan was what I proposed back in the beginning. I certainly understand you getting their attention by issuing the 90-day letter. I understand that that was in your discretion to do it. But whatever our agreement going forward, whatever our relationship is going forward, anything that's lawful, we can agree to it. And if you think that you want to, if you want to say that if for some reason we don't do what we're doing or what we should be doing, and you want to bring up past transgressions in some future proceeding, which we all hope never happens, we can agree to that. That's something that's available. If you want to see a change in leadership, that's available, okay? We, I have tried, I've turned over many stones talking to Ms. Enval, Ms. Nutcher, trying to reach an agreement here, and I'm glad we're having this discussion tonight because I think that's where we need to go. If the school had not made the changes that they wanted to make, I would not be standing before you this evening, okay? I think that this school, like the other eight or nine that are representing this county, will be good one going forward. I have a long-term relationship with Ms. Ward at the other places that she has worked at. I've known Ms. Ortiz and her staff, which are tremendous, the amount of resources that have been thrown at the school, the amount of time that's been volunteered by them, the amount of time that's been volunteered by my firm is tremendous. They have a great facility, they have everything else. We can have a conversation, we can reach an agreement, but there needs to be some indication that that's what you want to do. And so that's what I hope you'll do this evening.
Yes, Mr. Susan?
In the event that this gets pushed, we go to mediation, what negative effects are on your school?
It's uncertainty. I think that we could have, you know, staff could probably talk more about this, that we could have seated a lot more students. There's a lot of stress that went on. I am thoroughly impressed by Mrs. Ward's perseverance through all of this, through getting the things together and getting it done. The timetables that were -- that they were under and they had to be accelerated, the construction had to be accelerated very quickly. Some of those things that are in the past were open now, so it's better, and we have a plan for how we go forward. But the plan is, is the uncertainty. From your perspective, from our perspective, from staff's perspective, you know, uncertainty is the worst thing in business to plan for, right? And so if we had a path going forward, we'll get there, and that's what I'd like to see removed.
Thank you. And then Ms. Enval, do you -- is this ESE services and the compensatory, is that mandatory by law?
That is. It's federal law.
If we didn't do it before, that it has to be made up?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's something that is routinely offered.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we completely agree. If that student's still there, we will give it, and our contract says that if it's provided someplace else, she'll send us the bill. But we'd have to agree that, you know, we have to look into that on an individual basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, yes, Mr. Ziegler?
I just want to clarify, there was pointed out to us that there were two situations going on. One is the facility compliance, and the other's a 90-day termination, and I consider those two separate things. I think that I'd like to see us move forward on working out a settlement and showing the board that these deficiencies either have been rectified or that there's a plan in place to rectify them. I would also hope that, or expect that, the facility deficiencies, a separate issue, will be rectified by the time that anything else is rectified. I think I'm assuming it's late or typically we wouldn't wait a lot longer, but we need to set a definitive, I think, on that. If we do, if the board agrees to move forward either on a mediation or a settlement or a combination thereof, and one board member can participate, since it's not a public meeting, we all can participate. I think it's chair's prerogative. However, I would be fine with Mrs. Belford representing the board in that situation if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Just to remind everybody, there is no decision to be made unless a motion is made to supersede the original motion, and it would be, I believe, Ms. Enval, you would have to amend the emotion, previous one, or amend the -- no, I guess it wouldn't. It would be a new motion to, that would then supersede the one that we have, or at least --
To direct staff.
To direct the superintendent, not the staff. Sorry. Direct the superintendent in the way that you want to go. So --
Mr. Craig, can we ask Dr. Mullins for a point of clarification if he has any?
Point of clarification?
Or if he has anything to say?
Dr. Mullins?
Yeah, just point of clarification and as the board considers next course of action. Just some things I've heard and I'm kind of new to the discussion. It occurred to me that a settlement agreement mediation, those, both of those terms have been mentioned. Coming to an agreement does not necessarily mean the criteria will have necessarily been met. So that would need to be understood, that although I anticipate if an agreement can be come together on and brought to the board on September 11th, that doesn't necessarily meet at September 11th, the criteria that is established in the agreement would be met. There would have to be an established timeline, deadline, that sort of thing for that to happen, which then, consideration of the 90-day termination would need to be weighed in there. Just want to make sure that's understood, that --
That's what I -- yeah.
Okay? And then second, I heard reference to we develop a plan. I want to make sure that Legacy understand, if I'm -- this is maybe directed to Ms. Enval. If an agreement or mediation if an agreement or mediation is a direction that the board chooses to go, it would include the criteria by which legacy would be held accountable, and which they would need to develop the plan to meet those criteria. It would not be my staff's responsibility to develop the plan even with legacy. It would be their responsibility to ensure they meet the compliance of the criteria in the plan. And I just want to make, because there was reference to, we would develop the plan, that would, I anticipate that would not be the expectation, that our staff work with, we encourage them to develop a plan and work with their staff and their leadership to do that, and so on, and be our responsibility to ensure compliance. Just wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins.
May I also make a point of concern?
Yes, ma'am.
We already have an agreement, it's called a contract, and that's the one they violated repeatedly. So, I'm not completely convinced that another agreement is going to get us to the end result. And because they disregarded all of our directions last year, flagrantly disregarded statute, and now that they're trying to rectify those scenarios for this coming year, I'm concerned, like Mr. Ziegler said, or excuse me, Mr. Craig said, with the leadership. And we still have additional findings that are exactly what we found last year that are occurring this year. So, you know, if they're aware of these mistakes they need to fix, they are still having some issues that are going on, even though we've cited them repeatedly. So, as Mr. Ziegler said, there was an 85-page document, and they had numerous opportunities to cure repeatedly last year. And I too, thank you, Mr. Craig, take offense to the fact that they said we didn't support them, because there would be numerous times if we had not coached them, they would have fallen down, i.e. in their computer-based testing, and several other things that we tried to help them do the right thing, time again.
Okay. Unless I hear something, we'll move on to the next discussion. Yes, Ms. Belfort?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I would like to put forward a motion for the board to direct Ms. Enval to enter into discussions with Mr. Arnold and whoever else needs to be a part of that discussion to see if we can develop a compliance agreement. Ms. Enval?
And the superintendent.
And the superintendent?
Second. All right. We have a motion on the floor made by Ms. Belfort, seconded by Mr. Ziegler, to direct Ms. Enval to develop a compliance agreement with the Legacy Academy, or Legacy Charter School. Was that board or attorney?
I'm sorry?
Attorney. Attorney?
Attorney.
Attorney to attorney? Do you have?
Yes.
I got through about three-quarters of the motion. I want to make sure that I know.
It has to be a joint effort between myself and our staff, and the superintendent, his staff, whatever, I don't have staff, and then also Legacy's attorney and their staff. And I think that we need more direction as to, if that's the way it's going to go, what types of things that are outside of the charter contract with which they're required to comply anyway, what other types of things you think this looks like?
Right.
So, from, well, I absolutely understand that question. I don't think that that's something that we can resolve in the motion. I think that's going to necessitate individual conversations with the board members to determine what their concerns are.
Okay.
At the same time, we have not been given information as to what the outstanding concerns are. And so, I would guess, just knowing the board, that we probably are going to need some clarification as to what the outstanding concerns are at this point, that are either not curable, or are curable, but need to have a plan in place, or, so I don't, I don't think we can fit that all into a motion that Mr. Craig can jot down.
No, but I, no, but I think the motion that I stated to, that direct Ms. Enval to develop a compliance agreement with the Legacy Charter Representatives, and that would provide the superintendent with direction on compliance, is where you stated. Those particulars would be set by a, perhaps a board member that would work with Ms. Enval and our other legal counsel, and I can't remember her name.
Deborah.
Deborah, sorry, thank you, to make sure that there are items of concern, or be the liaison back to the board and/or to the superintendent for that information. Does that make sense, Ms. Enval? Do I have a board member that would be, well, that's, first of all, that would be my interpretation. Does that fit what you believe Ms. Belfort has said? Yes? That was made, we are already in discussion, obviously, because there's a...
We had a motion in a second.
Motion in a second. So, I didn't announce discussion, but we've already had it. So, I'm just kind of walking through to make sure that the, that the direction is clear to, since it was directed towards Ms. Enval, that she understands what that motion is. Do you have any questions, Ms. Enval, or do you need any more clarification?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Craig?
Yes. Mr. Ziegler?
With respect to Mrs. Archer's point about the existing contract and deficiencies, as I had stated before, so staff does not have to start over this laborious task of making a case, I would like to see in that agreement that the past is not wiped clean as if it never existed. And as Mr. Arnold said, I would hope we never revisit this, so it's irrelevant, but I think it's important to preserve staff's work.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comment? Before I call the, call the question, the only thing I will state is that I appreciate what Mr. Arnold said, in accepting responsibility. I would have liked to hear that from other people. And my opposition to this is in recognition of that, in the hopes that it stirs the creative juices of those involved, including their legal counsel, their board, Ms. Enval, and all the leadership. So, with that, I'll call the question for the motion that directs Ms. Enval to develop a compliance agreement with Legacy Staff, to give superintendent's direction for such compliance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes for one. We are on now to state guidelines for phosphorus, PFOS, PFOA.
There you go.
Ms. Deskovic, please. Chemistry.
Chemistry, yeah. A subject I wasn't so great at in high school, but I have learned so much lately. I'm asking you all to support, I'm going to give you a two, three-minute overview to kind of catch you up what's going on with the water situation, beachside. So, the DOD released a report in March where they did a study of numerous Air Force, Navy, Army bases, and they were studying for PFOS and PFOA, those two chemicals that are found in like water repellents and...
Firefighting foam.
I'm sorry?
Firefighting foam.
Yes, but also in other household items, Teflon pans, but also in this firefighting foam that they used at Patrick Air Force Base. Long story short, most guidelines say that drinking water shouldn't have more than 70 parts per trillion in it. And they tested, they've been testing groundwater at all these bases. Patrick Air Force Base came up the second highest in the country, I think, at 4.3 million parts per trillion in their groundwater at at least one of the locations, and over 70 parts per trillion in all 28 locations that they tested. So, that sent the residents of Satellite Beach and surrounding areas into some panic, which led to me requesting our drinking water being tested. City of Satellite Beach, City of Cocoa Beach tested the groundwater. The city of Satellite Beach came back with elevated levels of this chemical. It travels in sandy soils, research has shown. So, their groundwater came back with elevated levels, but below the 70 parts per trillion. Cocoa Beach, however, came back with upwards of 400 and something parts per trillion in their groundwater. And that, we're using that to water, that reclaimed water to water our grounds. I'm kind of in the middle of all this with parents contacting me with their concerns. So, Mr. Theodore sent, or maybe it was Mr. Powers, someone in Mr. Theodore's department sent a letter to the state asking for guidance if it was okay to water the, our property with that water. The state came back and said, yes, it's okay, because you have low levels. Kind of a vague statement. We're going with that. We're watering overnight and before students ever arrive, so they're not coming in contact with that groundwater. But there's a lot of concerns, and there's a lot of concerns within the two communities. Been doing a ton of research with a bunch of other people, and there are many states. At this point, the EPA has set the advisory, but they haven't set any regulatory standards. But other states have stepped up, and they have set for their state regulatory standards for drinking and for groundwater. And they're kind of all over the board. Some of them as low as seven parts per trillion, which Satellite High came back with that, with their tests, and our first go-around at 12 parts per trillion for the drinking water. So, we've got several concerns going on here. Long story short, I want to ask for your support tonight in us putting together and working with, I've already talked to the city of Satellite Beach, where we're going to approach the city of Cocoa Beach and the county, and put together a letter from all of us, possibly even some type of proclamation that we could vote on next month, asking for our state to step in and set regulatory standards, not just guidelines, on both the PFOS, PFOA. It's not just our community, it's going to be other communities as they start testing. And so, I'm hoping you all will support that initiative.
I think that's awesome. And first of all, I just want to thank you for all the time you've put into this. I know it's something you're passionate about for various reasons, but numerous reasons, but you have really done a lot of work, and I appreciate that, and I think all of us do. I do have one question, though. So, I agree with you completely, completely support it, but what, when we ask for regulatory, what are we expecting if compliance is not, if it's still there? So, like, it's great to put regulations in, but are we asking for cleanup? Are we asking for, at the same time, state dollars to, or federal dollars to fix, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's great to have...
Right, right. The first issue is, I'm not a scientist, and neither are the, you know, the other people that are concerned in the community. So, we want the state to get experts in to tell us what's safe, and not just a blanket, well, if it's kind of low, you're safe. We want exact science, and we want them to do the research and tell us. And then, if we are over, maybe we're not. I mean, one state set it at 7,000 parts per trillion for groundwater, which means Cocoa Beach is fine. Once we know if we are not safe for some reason, then yes, then you can apply for the state to come down, or even the federal government, or you can ask Patrick Air Force Base, which some Navy bases, especially in Jacksonville, has reached out and offered funds for the surrounding communities to help clean up. But until we know and have a set standard, I feel like we're just kind of shooting in the dark, and that's, it's not fair.
Okay. Anybody else? Everybody in support? Thumbs up? Excellent. Go forth and conquer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Susan, Athletic Advisory Group.
I will be fast.
Quick.
Being around in the various areas, and coaches, and athletic directors, and facilities, and boosters, and everybody else, there seems to be some issues that I think have been addressed within those groups, that there may be some solutions to, that in many times are not monetary, that we might be able to help the coaches out with regulations, and even Dr. Mullins, one of them, I was discussing with him today, about allowing the coaches to possibly drive some of the vehicles. He said, hey, two years ago, we offered them a bus and to go get their CDL licenses, and not many showed up. When I was in a meeting with the ADs on Monday, and I just so happened to walk right in there, and Mr. Maharris was inside there, and one of them had mentioned that, and said, that would be a great idea. So, we have a group of them that may not have known about it, because there's new athletic directors, maybe we have, being the fact we have eight new football coaches and everybody else. So, the idea is that we have this facilities athletic agreement going out, and trying to identify where our deficiencies are inside each one of the schools, and coming back to us. And I talked to Dr. Mullins about this just a little bit before we came out here, and he said, you know, we already have kind of a process in place, and instead of creating an entire other process, let's, why don't we use the one that we have to identify the short, in the short run, the major issues, come together with the facilities and this, and then workshop it with us, right? So, what I was going to recommend was, we send, have Mr. Maharris work with communications to send out one of our quick surveys to say to each one of the athletic directors, meet with your coaches and your boosters, and say, hey, what is it that at your school is one of your, some of your hot-burning issues, along with some solutions that you might have for it? He, Dr. Mullins thought that was a great idea. We're not creating a separate process, we're using the one that's in existence. Once that survey comes back to us, then those recommendations can be made with us, and we can workshop them, and we can move forward. What do you think about that? Just want to try to avoid another...
I think it's great.
Okay. All right.
I do...
So, if everybody's on board, we can do that?
It's my little tiger team thing, so I really like it. It's excellent.
Why is it called the Tiger Team? Is that cocoa? Is that military? It's not cocoa, right? Because I have an issue with it.
It could be, we could call it...
No, it can't be cocoa.
Anybody have any comments or issues about it? I think it, Matt, you bring up some great points there, and I know we've discussed it, and I know that we are looking forward to that report from facilities, from what Dr. Blackburn had directed, and that'll be a catalyst, you know. How we fix it will be a whole nother story, or how we get on a path to fix it will be a whole nother story, and will involve our community quite a bit, I'm sure. So, I do appreciate that. So, at the lack of tasking you, Mr. Susan, please, as Ms. Deskovic, go forth and conquer on that. Get us moving.
Oh, I love it. Love it. Thank you.
Does any other board member have anything that they wish to bring before the board? Ms. Belfort?
Oh, sorry, I know, but I have to get it out there. Well, the topic is top of mind for so many right now. So, I mentioned to you all how wonderful things are going at Southlake right now, and, you know, the parents are all talking about, everybody seems so happy, and the parents are involved, and they're buying pencil sharpeners, and bookshelves, and backpack hangers for their classrooms, because they're not in the classroom already, because, you know, when you start a new school, you kind of build those things over time. My point is, it is very much a community at that school already, with everyone focused on really making it something great. And while that is fabulous, my ask for all of us and for everyone out there is that we all put that effort into our own neighborhood schools. Because I am strongly of the opinion that one of the biggest factors of success in a school is involvement from parents and community. And I think that speaks to students' academic achievement. I think that speaks to culture in school. I think it speaks to opportunities for students. Take Stock in Children programs, mentoring programs at Astronaut High School as part of the Avid program. And so, that is my call to action for each of us. I know we're pretty involved in various things, but as we are communicating to kind of encourage that throughout the system, you know, the, looking at the community barbecue that the feeder chain pulled together, it was amazing what they were able to accomplish, and had a wonderful impact. And I think if we could just really keep that message top of mind as we go through the year, and make sure we're making those connections, like our industry partners with the CTE Consortium, and the, that, I think, is the key to our success, and we just need to keep reminding people that there are always, always opportunities for that. So, off my soapbox.
Thank you. Anybody else have any?
I really do, but I'm not going to say anything, because I think Tina's kicked me in the shin about three times.
Okay. Then I'll blow it here and just say, Friday morning, Bayside High School, tied together, we need more gentlemen to teach these boys how to tie ties. So, Friday morning, any volunteers want to help out?
Are there bow ties in there? Like, do you need a bow tie?
Not yet. Only you.
No.
We're going to teach you how to tie a bow tie, but yeah, Friday morning, we need some more gentlemen to help these boys learn how to tie their new ties. Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. And the only thing I will add is that on September 8th, Saturday night, is the Brevard Schools Foundation Take Stock for Children, Take Stock in Children Annual Gala at the O'Gala Yacht Club. I think Dr. Mullins will be there, I believe. It's September 8th. If you are so interested, it's a great event, a lot of fun, and I know, I think I'll be there with Dr. Mullins at least, so if you haven't been before, it is well worthwhile, and get to hear from a couple of the beneficiaries of the Take Stock in Children program. They do give their testimonies, and it's inspiring. So, hopefully, some of, some of, all of us can join us. Dr. Mullins, do you have anything to add?
Just to close, similarly, the way we started, tomorrow morning, bright and early, we get to welcome our class of 2030... to welcome our class of 2031. 2031, we welcome our kindergarteners, so very excited. And hopefully, they're not necessarily watching right now, but maybe some moms and dads are. We look forward to meeting your young'uns tomorrow.
Fantastic. And with that, we are adjourned.